Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and invocation by Councilmember Danny Bagley.
Good afternoon, please be seated, everybody. Couple of comments I'd like to make first to thank UNMC. They gave a presentation to anybody from the city that was welcome to go last Friday. It was an hour-long Zoom call that was... They had frontline healthcare providers, including an infectious disease doctor, a critical care doctor, and a nurse. Real powerful accounts, so I want to thank each and every one of our caregivers in the city and around everywhere that are making life tolerable for people that are suffering. Secondly, I'd like to thank together Omaha, Aaron and Tina Murray on the great outreach they did in our community on 25th and Jones Street where some residents, tenants, through no fault of their own were displaced. And I really want to thank them and as well as Omaha Police and Fire that responded to help those people. Thankless jobs they do that help people in our community, especially when it's bitter cold. And finally, I had the great pleasure last Monday with Dr. Thompson at the Howland Center to sit in as a judge for the Living the Dream MLK Competition. And Dr. Thompson, as I said in pre-council, those young students from grades seven through 12, they blew me away in about three and a half hours of the presentations they gave. So in society today where everybody might be mad at each other, the youth of tomorrow after sitting through that at the Howland Center, I feel great and I'm always hopeful. So that gave me a great boost in my spirit and I want to thank Dr. Thompson for the great work he's doing. I understand you got an award, I won't give away, that you're going to present here in a minute. So, thank you, everyone.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here and look forward to your testimony on our many items today. I want you to please turn your cellphones off or at least turn them to vibrate. And we will start with our first presentation here regarding the Martin Luther King Junior High School Awards. I believe Dr. Thompson is here to make that presentation. The floor is yours.
Franklin Thompson, Human Rights and Relations, 1819 Farnham Street. We believe very strongly that city government should be involved with young people. And up until now, pretty much the only thing that we involve ourselves with schools is the resource officers. And so, I went to the mayor earlier, a couple of years ago, four years ago in fact, and said, is there another way that we can involve kids? And particularly, the citizenship education of kids. And so, we instituted the Martin Luther King Living the Dream Award in which young people then have to come out on Martin Luther King Day and express how they are living the dream. It is true, I'm telling a little secret here, but some kids aren't in school on that day and they sleep until 12 o'clock, get up and eat a bowl of Cap'n Crunch and then they'll go to the TV and watch TV until about 4:00, 4:30, and then they'll hurry up and do one or two chores before mom comes home. Well, what we want to do is try to use, get them to use that day a little bit better than that. And so, we challenged them on that day to come out and make a statement. And this year, we had our fourth annual event. Before you is the results of that event and you can see that it's metro area-wide. And then you can see that it's high school and middle school slash junior high school. And as you can see, the winners, as Mr. Bagley said, were from all the grade levels. So it wasn't just seniors and juniors dominating, but also the younger kids too. At the very bottom, you see that the mayor gives a medallion, an honor roll medallion, and that's for the one student who most likely approximates Martin Luther King's dream. And it's no secret that as the ages go on, that the whole idea of social justice, civil rights, equity, it becomes enlarged. The definition gets larger and larger and larger. And so, but we always want to stay pure to Martin Luther King's original dream, which is that the people living together. And so, the mayor's honor roll medallion went to a Bryan High student by the name of Michael Thomas. Is Michael here today or are any of the Bryan people here today? Come on up, please. Sit on the front row. Sit on the front row. So if Michael can just stand up. This is the mayor's honor roll winner. And then, we also have what we call a... We also have what we call the overall grand prize winner. We have first, second, and third place winners across seven categories. But then, out of all of those winners, out of those 21 winners, we also have a one person who exemplifies as the grand prize winner. And that person is Mr. Don Hannan. Don, would you stand up? And he's also from Bryan. And these are judges that pick these winners. I don't pick them, the judges pick them. And then, we also have what we call a traveling trophy, which you see right there to my right. And every year, the trophy goes to the school that is kind of combination 50% how much they got into the competition, but also another 50%, just the reputation of that school in terms of social justice and multicultural issues, equity issues. And we combine those two 50s and come up with a best school award. So, this year, the best multicultural slash social justice slash living the dream school award goes to Bryan High School. You know that, like anything in life, there's always the sexy favorite choice and then there's the choice where, sort of like the dark horse. And I'd like to see Bryan recognized a whole lot more. But it's not because I don't think they're under-recognized, but they actually have, if you go to their school, you will see every race under the sun goes to that school, first of all. And they have a great program, not only for white, black, red, and brown people, but also for refugees. They have a principal who, he's not black, but he does act like a soul brother sometimes. And he cares about the social justice message and making sure that everybody is cared for. So, in my mind, Bryan High is the perfect hidden gem of OPS of all the schools. And so, I would like the principal to come forward. And then also, the lead teacher that helped these kids get ready, I'd like for him to come forward too. I'd like for them to introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, Ronnie Ortega, proud principal of Bryan High School. Thank you for this recognition. Dr. Thompson, we are honored to be here with all of you today. And I'm just proud of the remarkable things our students do every single day. Mr. Clausen is our fantastic social studies teacher who helped prepare our students. And I'll have him say a few words. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Nick Clausen. I teach history at Bryan High School. I'm very proud of the work that the kids did. This is their talent and their labor, that they put in the hard hours of repetition to make sure that they got their performances down right. And I'm incredibly honored to be here and I love seeing the fruits of their labor right here. Thank you.
In addition, there are people who work in this building who are Bryan alum. And so, I would like for Mr. Fitzher to come up and he wants to say something too about his school, his alumni school.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. I've been your city engineer for 11 years. I've been here for 15. David, I think you and I have something in common. Would you care to share with, how long you've been here and where you graduated from high school?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I'm not sure I know you, but...
That's fine with me.
Worked here 32 years and yes, Todd and I went to Bryan High School together back in the mid-'80s.
This is your moment. We just want to say, go Bears! We're super proud of you guys.
The first year, this distinguished award went to Central High School. The second year, it went to Omaha Northwest. Third year, it went to Omaha North. This year, the final, three finalists were Westside Middle School, yes, a suburban school can qualify for this. And then also Bryan, and then Central again. And Bryan beat those out and I'd like to go ahead and present that to Mr. Ortega. Anything else you want to say? Again, we want to thank young people for getting involved during my, when I was young, back in the caveman days, we got involved all the time. In fact, a lot of people don't know that the Tech High classes of '71, '72, and '73 led the Civil Rights March movement in Omaha. And the adults were the ones that had to finalize it, but it was students who led it. And then, then there came this era in the '80s where like Madonna came along and Material Girl and the material world. And so, social justice kind of wasn't important for a while. But ever since the Black Lives Matter and all of the other movements, things that happened in town, things that happened nationwide, George Floyd, et cetera, young people have taken their step up to the microphone and they're delivering again. And once again, young people are speaking and I think that's a good thing. Let's give these young people one more hand.
My name is Don Hannan and I'm the overall winner. And I would just like to say, this is very nice and I'm happy that you guys are broadcasting this on such a broad level because I didn't even know like places like this exist. I hear about it in my, in my history class, in my AP Government class that I'm in right now. And it's like pretty neat to like see it in real life, in person. It like shows that my hard work paid off because I've been playing the piano for like, well, I taught myself four years ago. And like, winning an accomplishment like this, you know, it like shows that hard work pays off. And it's not broadcasted through sports or nothing. It's like something that everybody could do if you have a hidden talent. And I would just like to say, thank you.
On behalf of the city council, I want to say thank you as well, Dr. Thompson, for this event you put on every year. I do think and agree it's very important. Having been a former judge myself, it is a very impressive event and these kids come out and give you hope for the future. And I want to thank the teachers and the principals to help make this possible. Without their support, I probably wouldn't. But most of all, thanks to the students. You all are very impressive. We're impressed with you and happy to have you here today and pleased that you're here and also interested in local government. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Items six through 13 relate to the same project and can be considered together for the crossroads located northwest of 72nd and Dodge Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six and seven, ordinances to rezone this property from R1 District, R8 District, LC District, and GC District to GC District and MU District. Item eight, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI II overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item nine, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 10, an ordinance to repeal the existing MCC major overlay district. Item 11, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement. Item 12, resolution to approve the final plat for the crossroads. Item 13, a resolution to approve the crossroads subdivision agreement with A being an amendment of the whole and B being a revised amendment of the whole.
Thank you. So the public hearings on items six through 13 are today and so is the vote. For councilmembers' knowledge, we will take two votes today, six through 12, and then a separate vote on number 13, given the amendment of the whole. We'll start with proponents, please. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Kevin Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff in the Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham. Here today in support of the legislative package relating to the ultimate development of the crossroads facility, a very exciting opportunity that will be transformative for our central part of the community. Want to call out especially item number 13. What you have in front of you is amendment language that represents the culmination of collaboration between the development team, City Public Works, City Law Office, and the Mayor's Office, coming together to work towards an acceptable solution for all parties that builds upon an acceptable traffic study relating to the development and the impacts of such. So, that being said, we encourage your support and I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. And thank you for working on that amendment. Other proponents.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Councilmember Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm here on behalf of KJ Crossroads LLC, which is a joint venture between Century Development, Inc. and Lockwood Development, Inc. We do have a number of representatives here today on behalf of the development team, including from Lockwood Development, multiple representatives, also from Holland Basham Architects, Lamprey Nielsen, Olson Associates, all part of our large development team on this great project. We're really excited to be here today, culmination of over two and a half years of effort. And there was a lot of joint work between a lot of the city departments that led us to our path here today and right up to the very last minute in fact. So, I do want to thank the Mayor's Office for support, the Planning Department, City Planning Department, the Law Department, the Public Works Department, Finance Department. Want to thank all the council members for strongly supporting our project as it's moved along. There's a lot of challenges. It's not the easiest site in the world to develop. It's a huge redevelopment project and there's just, it takes a lot of people to coordinate something like this. And I think we have something on the table that's going to be really exciting for our community as we move forward. Chip and Frank have committed a lot of money to this venture and had a lot of faith in taking these steps to raise the buildings and start all the grading work and move forward with this project. And I'm very confident that they're going to deliver everything that you've seen the pictures of. And just, we'll appreciate the continued support of the community as we try and move this project forward and anyway. So I'm here to, our team's here to answer any questions we might have, that the council might have. And again, just once again, thank you to everybody for allowing us to get here today.
Thank you. Other proponents today. I think we do have a couple of proponents by Zoom. I'll ask if we can unmute Micah Ellis first. Okay, give that a try. Want to give your name and address, please?
Hi there.
Okay.
Sure. First name's Micah, last name's Ellis, and I'm at 1024 North 74th Ave. And I just thank you for your time and for hearing everybody. I am a proponent for Ms. Councilman Besterman's, Besterson, excuse me, amendment to add speed calming measures on our street, mainly with the amount of children we have, including my family. That's a main concern with lining up the new entrance exit to the crossroads development. Gives me a lot of anxiety and that's the main reason today. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you and thanks for engaging in that conversation. I think we have another proponent by Zoom, I believe, Mr. Crampton.
Yeah, hey, Brent Crampton, 1024 North 74th Avenue. Love that this area is being developed. Just want to ask for some parking measures to help slow down traffic. That's about it.
Great.
Speed bumps.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. And for councilmembers' background, that measure is included in what will be the amendment of the whole on 13B. In working with the neighborhood and also Suzie Wine Gardner, who couldn't be on Zoom today from the neighborhood, what will be accomplished as part of that subdivision amendment of the whole is that a block of 74th Ave to the north into the neighborhood whereby it will be a major access point could achieve a speed bump on each of those blocks, should the majority of neighbors on each of those blocks desire to put one in at the expense of the developer, which we appreciate to help address those concerns. And I think that's why, in addition to the amazing development of the neighborhood, is all on board today. I think that's all we have by proponents, but I'll give one more call here in the audience. Okay. Any opponents? None? Okay, one? And we do have some opponents by Zoom that I'll get to next.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I don't live very far from there and I have some friends in that area. But what's not clear on these six or seven items here is, my goodness, a lot of that work's already done and we're just now voting on it? Seems like it's a foregone conclusion, so why do we waste our time voting? I don't know how many residents from the northwest corner of 72nd and whatever are here today, have they, do they know how this is going to affect their property values and their taxes? Because the people on that side of 72nd or that side of Cass Street are probably getting a break. People on the other side of Cass Street probably are not. So, you know, just a little more transparency in these items that, why are we voting on it now if everything's already decided? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents in the audience? Seeing none, we do have two opponents by Zoom. I'm not sure who wants to start first, maybe Mr. Ferguson? We'll try and get you off Zoom here in a second.
I'm sorry, I was going to let Mr. Proba to speak first.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Proba. We'll get you up. There we go. Name and address?
My, my work address is 605 West 47th. Can you see me by any chance?
We can see your name, not your picture. Okay, there you go.
Okay, yes, hi, good afternoon. My current work address is 605 West 47th Street, Suite 200, Kansas City, Missouri, 64112. Thank you for taking the time today. I represent Heritage Plaza, which is at 76th and Dodge. We are against this project currently right now because of the information that is out there that our organization has not been able to digest and process. Currently, Lockwood butts up against our property at 76th and Dodge and Heritage. And the work that they have done currently has sustained us massive financial casualties up where of the $600,000 mark. Lockwood, I understand this is a very big project for the company, for the organization and the community, but being good neighbors is also part of this that we're trying to be. And we're just trying to understand the future development and, I would say, acknowledge what would happen to this project if we were to go forward without us, you know, knowing more about it. We're asking for a 60-day stay to review the information. We've had a chance to look at all the documents on the websites and it's vast, enormous. And our Engineering Department and Construction Department has not had the opportunity to go through to see the effect that it will cause with rain runoff water, ADA compliance, surveys, and things of that nature. The current work has affected our tenants in many great lengths due to store closures, flooding, property value loss. So what we're asking for, again, is just more time to digest the information that Lockwood has done on our own independent scale. I understand that there is surveys out there and other items, but we have not had a chance to digest that yet. So, we're asking for a 60-day stay so we can observe and know more information before this final vote is taken.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, did you also want to speak?
Maybe to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Proba has said...
And just your name and address? Just your name and address for the record, too?
Oh, I apologize. Andrew Ferguson, 3555 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. To piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Proba has said, the issues that we have run into as far as this particular venture is concerned is that our clients are on the downhill side of the crossroads project. The runoff, the storm sewer, piping, things like that have all been disrupted because of the construction that has gone on to date, causing, as Mr. Proba said, massive flooding in the Heritage Plaza properties. We have had to close our stores, we have had to add bilge pumps, we have had to take major steps to attempt to deal with the issues that have been caused by the construction that we were completely unaware of. And now, it's my understanding in looking at what is on the agenda, there are going to be more construction issues, more layover issues. We simply need more time. We need more time to be able to get our own survey crews, our own construction crews, our own engineers in to take a look at the issues that have transpired. And we're simply asking, as Mr. Proba said, for an additional 60-day timeframe. I don't know that that's too much to ask, given the fact that this project has been underway for two and a half, three years now. I don't think 60 days is going to make that much difference. Thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing now. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I obviously have been supportive of this project as it's gone through the various phases of approval through Planning Board and City Council and now really we're on a final approach for this. So, I too wanted to thank the Mayor's Office, Public Works, Planning, Law, Finance, and especially to the development team who is really taking a risk on renovating or redeveloping what's, may not be geographically the center of Omaha, but kind of a notion of the center of Omaha, that being 72nd and Dodge. So the, I'll be making a motion to approve six through 12, but also, and 13B. But the main difference, just for the record, between A, the amendment of the whole in A, and the amendment of the whole B, is in addition to the traffic calming issues that have been previously brought up, there's an acknowledgement and approval of the traffic study that details the requirements that are to be made as well, too. So, again, the collaborative effort, the willingness to work together, I think is, after a long time, is the reason we're here today. And I want to thank all those parties for doing so. So, with that, I'll move, I'll initially move approval of six through 12.
Thank you. And I would add my support for this as well. This has been a long time coming. Mr. Bouger said they've been working on this for two and a half years. One might argue we've been working on this for 20 years. Sure feels that way to me. And I'm really excited to see this move forward and finally get this redeveloped, not just for the neighborhood, but the entire city, a major commercial property in our city that can be once again restored to what has been traditionally the heartbeat... once again restored to what has been traditionally the heartbeat of our city. We have talked a lot about all these details. Um, over six months ago, we had all these items through Planning Board and through City Council. We've had all these items, uh, in terms of the final plat and subdivision and rezoning on our agenda for several weeks now. We're delayed already a couple of weeks, so I don't feel like that delay has to happen any, any further. But having said that, I did, um, speak with, uh, the Heritage Plaza folks, uh, about their concerns, and I did wanna ask just a few questions to try and help them get those addressed. I understand that, um, what may have happened in, in terms of a previous rainstorm is under discussion between the two parties, and I would consider a civil matter. But as to the questions, uh, about runoff and ADA access and all those things going forward, once construction is, is, is underway and complete, uh, I think those answers are within these documents, but I, I did wanna give Mr. Fanslaw, maybe Mr. Stube has a chance to address those items, because I presume that's something like with all developments, developments your departments did review, uh, in a lot of, with a lot of energy and a lot of analysis. So, um, would you care to address those issues?
Dave Fanslow, City Planning, are you specifically asking about the Heritage Plaza issues?
Yes, the, the development issues, what's before us today and what is included in these items in terms of the subdivision, the replat and the rezoning, and your analysis of them, including, uh, ADA issues and any runoff issues that you have observed?
Well, I guess I'll echo that my department has worked on this project, not twenty years, but surely the last two and a half. We, we had, uh, month, uh, weekly meetings with the development team to work through all of the issues, um, starting back, I think, beginning of two thousand twenty-one. So, we met on this project probably more than we have any other development project, just because of the scope and the importance of it. ADA issues will be handled per code, and I was copied in on an email, I believe, the week I was out of town, um, dealing with the private storm sewers that are connecting those two properties, and I think I'd probably defer to Bob if he has any information on that.
Thank you. Mr. Stube?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, so when we talk about stormwater, there's, there's provisions in the code also that require the developer to perform certain things. Uh, one is that the, the code requires that there be no net increase in, in stormwater runoff. Obviously, during construction, there's requirements with regard to, uh, once again, making sure there's no runoff, so, uh, measures need to be in place, and that's evaluated by the, uh, the engineering firm that's involved in the particular project, and they have to, uh, inspect that on a regular basis. And then there's also provisions with regard to, uh, post-stormwater, post-construction stormwater measures that are also required.
Thank you. So, I would encourage, uh, the Heritage Plaza folks who I also represent, just to make sure they're in communication with, um, the Public Works Department and the Planning Department on these issues as this moves forward, to make sure that we, we do have a suitable development that also works for you to the west there. Uh, lastly, Mr. Bouger, if you wouldn't mind, one more question. Um, this, uh, go ahead, name and address?
Uh, Jim Bouger, one zero two five zero Regency Circle.
So, there are a lot of items here, uh, that keeps the project moving, uh, but there's still more items yet to come back to the City Council at, you know, at a future date, right?
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, the City Council did previously hear, uh, some entitlement, uh, matters, including TIF and EEA, and there's a garage component to that. So, we still do have, uh, some additional work to do. We're working on a redevelopment agreement with the city, with the City Law Department presently to finalize those arrangements. So, sometime in the coming months, we will have, uh, another public hearing on the, on the redevelopment agreement.
Great. And these approvals today will keep you on your timeframe, which is?
So, this, it is important. Uh, so, we're ready to, as, as you can all tell, if you drive by the site on, on Dodge, uh, you can see that the site is raised, the grading work has been, you know, substantially completed to rough grade the site, and we're ready to start on what I would call the public infrastructure phase, which would include all the sewers, streets, utilities that need to service the project. And so, part of what, uh, in part to answer a question is why are we here today to talk about this? Well, this subdivision agreement and the mixed-use agreement help define what those public improvements look like, and that's why that's so important that we are here today, and we have worked collaboratively, collaboratively to comply with the regulations and to make sure we have a project that does comply with all the code requirements, and we can actually move forward. So, that is what the council today is considering and approving, uh, those various agreements that define those improvements. So, we're itching and ready to go, uh, weather permitting, and, and, uh, that will, you'll see that work starting soon.
Weather's okay today, so, uh, when do you think, um, things will be out of the ground and actually open? What's the objective that are in the timeline?
So, uh, I probably better not say exactly. I know that the, the intent is to, to hopefully get all of the public's, uh, improvements in this year, so, um, we're hoping that, you know, by a year from now or so, we'll, and, and things can work in stages, uh, we'll have some, maybe some vertical infrastructure start coming out of the ground. But it's, it's gonna be, it's a huge project. We have some big components to the project, tall buildings, big buildings that need to be designed, uh, but while that infrastructure's being installed, a lot of that work will be going on, and so, you know, I would, I would be hopeful that, that sometime next year, we'll have some, you know, substantial projects that are underway, and, and, and those will take several months, if not a year, to build, and then hopefully in the next three years, we'll have some completed buildings. And, and, and the idea, the concept is, uh, this is a type of project that, that there are gonna be multiple components of it that are being, uh, constructed at once. So, when, when work starts here, you're gonna see a lot of, a lot of movement in a, in a fast timeframe. So, it's, uh, it's pretty exciting. It's a lot to ju- uh, juggle for the management team and the development team, and, uh, but it's exciting, too, and, and there is a, there's a lot of interest in this area. It is, uh, is alluded to, this is kind of the heartbeat of Omaha. It's an iconic intersection, as Mr. James alluded to in the initial, uh, public presentation of the project, and there's just a lot of, a lot of history that's happened at, at its intersection, and it's, and it's really important, and I think we're treating it with that respect, so.
Thank you. Thanks for your perseverance with the project, and also I want to thank Mr. Creche and Mr. James for their investment in Omaha.
Yeah, and I thank them, too, for letting me be involved. It's great. It's, it's, it's a fun project, so it's, it's done coming along every day, so, it's pretty cool.
There's a motion and a second on items six through twelve. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Row, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through twelve are approved seven to zero.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Cusey, thank you for your work yesterday. Appreciate it.
Here comes the most important one. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
So, now, now comes the, um, the subdivision agreement that was just referencing the importance of that. Um, and again, I, uh, one of the things I, I failed to mention in my comments earlier, too, was the, the, the scope of this project. I mean, this is, uh, basically a five hundred and fifty million, six hundred million dollar project for the city of Omaha, which, um, that, again, the investment in, in the, at Seventy-Second Dodge, um, is going to be, um, a great economic injection for not only that area, uh, but the, the surrounding areas, and, and for those that will come in to, to visit and experience all the activities of, of crossroads. So, on the subdivision, um, I'm, agreement, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, for amendment of the whole B, um, to be approved.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Row, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirteen B is approved seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items fourteen through seventeen relate to the same project and can be considered together for Pacific Street West, replat fifteen, located northwest of Two Hundred and Third and Pier Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items fourteen and fifteen, ordinances to rezone this property from DR District and MU District to DR District and MU District. Item sixteen, a resolution to approve the final plat for Pacific Street West, replat fifteen. Item seventeen, a resolution to approve the Pacific Street West replat fifteen subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and votes on numbers fourteen through seventeen are today. Proponents, please.
My name's Kyle Hazy with NA Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Die Road, representing the applicant. Uh, the project is located at Two Hundred and Fourth and, uh, Pacific Street. It is, uh, pretty simple. It's a lot shift and increasing it a lot from point seven acres to, to full one acre and taking that, uh, point three acres out of the DR lot adjacent. That'll make myself available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Row, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items fourteen through seventeen are approved seven to zero. Items eighteen through twenty-one relate to the same project and can be considered together for The Hill, located northeast of Hundred and Sixty-Eighth and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items eighteen and nineteen, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R Four District. Item twenty, a resolution to approve The Hill final plat. Item twenty-one, a resolution to approve The Hill subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items eighteen through twenty-one are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty Western Road, appearing on behalf of the developer and the development. Uh, this is a hundred and seventy-one lot subdivision on the northeast corner of Hundred and Sixty-Eighth and State Street. We're simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Row, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items eighteen to twenty-one are approved seven to zero. Item twenty-two, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow daycare services in the R Four Single District located at four seven one nine O'Hearn Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Elset Christian, four seven one nine O'Hearn Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one seven. Just here to answer questions.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Row, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-three, to consider a Class I liquor license for Star Indian Cuisine located at two four two nine South Hundred and Thirty-second Street.
This item was postponed from our January eleventh agenda. The public hearing and vote are today. Proponents, please. Your name and address?
Uh, my name is Rahes Sahu, and I'm here for the Star Indian Cuisine. The address is two four two nine South Hundred and Thirty-second Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Zip code is six eight one four four.
Thank you. Just here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
Thanks. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Thank you.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Row, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-four, to consider a Class D liquor license for Walker's Convenient Mart located at three nine three two North Sixteenth Street. A is communications and opposition.
This item was also postponed from our January eleventh meeting. Uh, public hearing was continued today, and the vote can be today. Proponents, please.
Ramar Walker, uh, thirty-nine thirty-two North Sixteenth Street is the address of the location.
Thank you.
My home address is fifty-seven fifteen North Thirty Street, and I'm here to answer any questions on behalf of Walker's Convenient Mart.
Thank you. Nice to have you here in person. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon, my name is Ellen Sexton, and sixteen oh seven Laird Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm the president of Laird Street Association. Uh, previously, I had written a letter opposing a liquor license in our area, and the reason being, um, we had previous problems with a tenant in that building. I'm here to support Mr. Walker today. I did not know that Mr. Walker owned the property now, and my concern was that it used to be a motorcycle club, and we had a lot of problems with after-hour parties, trash noise, um, disturbances, and things of that nature. After your hearing, I couldn't make the last, um, council meeting to, due to a personal matter. After the last meeting, and you got the, he got the continuance, I was very impressed that Mr. Walker reached out to our neighborhood association and to, um, other opponents, Ms. Weston, and spoke to us at length, also the church that's in our area that's right around the corner. I previously worked with the former pastor, Pastor Ashley, and I do not know the present pastor, to, um, take care of nuances in our neighborhood. I've lived there twenty-two years in this neighborhood. Mr. Walker came and presented his plans to us, and he's done great improvements to the building, and this isn't just some pop-up store. He's making a big personal investment in the area. Traditionally, we are underserved areas in transportation, services, and different types of things. We have a very diverse neighborhood that's changed over the last ten years, and we have, um, every race that you can think of in the neighborhood, and a lot of people don't have transportation. So, they have to walk to their nearest convenience store, which is a mile and a half to two miles away. Any, anyone, any convenience store that we have locally. He is making this a premier building. He's, um, very similar to a Casey's, and he's making a great personal investment. And he explained to us the reason that he wanted the liquor license is because, so he could be competitive, and liquor is legal, um, and it's a personal choice to misuse it, but I feel like he's being a really responsible business owner, reaching out, giving us his plans, keeping hours that are very early hours, and liquor is in his primary objective to sell. He's using it for a competitive edge. So, if somebody in our neighborhood wanted a beer after work, or whatever, the wife wanted some eggs, the kid wanted a slushy, they don't have, they can go right there. It's right there for them. If he didn't have the service of possibly the liquor, they'll not make any purchase and go to the next store down the street. So, to keep them competitive and have a black-owned business in our area, as well as, he's always lived in our areas, and he can relate to the kids, and he works with the kids, and it shows him that hard work is possible and being involved in your community. So, I support him getting the liquor license, and I think he'll work very well within our neighborhood.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Cheryl Weston, one eight one one Emmett Street, and I'm here to, um, support Mr. Walker, and pretty much diddle everything that, uh, Ms. Sexton said. Um, and I have sent you a letter detailing that, and I think that this is an opportunity, and I just want to put a little tidbit in, is I hope the TV people get this right this time. We were not opposed to businesses coming about in our neighborhood. We were opposed to liquor, more liquor establishments. And as Ms. Sexton says, after talking with Mr. Walker, that's not his primary option. That's not his primary business. This is going to be a family-owned business, um, minority-owned, and hopefully, maybe it'll just be the start of what's going to take place along that area. So, I hope that you will consider and vote unanimously to support him and give him this Class D, um, liquor license. Everybody deserves an opportunity. So, if you vote yes, you're giving him that opportunity. If he screws it up, then it's on him, but don't let this be on you. Give him this opportunity to have this business, and, um, as she said, his plans look good, and it's an investment. It's not putting four or five dollars into something to dress it up, to get in, and not, he's putting a substantial amount of financial, his own money, into this. So, again, I'm supporting Mr. Walker, and, um, I really do feel and believe, and I hope you don't make us wrong, um, in this support. Um, we would really like to have this unanimously, um, given him the opportunity to make this business. Thank you.
Other proponents today? Uh, we'll hear from, from other proponents, then maybe we'll call you back up, Mr. Walker.
I'm Jalen Ashley, thirty-four twenty-eight Manderson Street. I am one of most-
I am one of most moves employees. I've been working with him as well as taking his councilmanship for a very long time. He bought, he bought bringing the studio to, taking the studio and turned it into a convenience mart to my attention about a month ago. I wasn't sure how I felt about it because I'm like, what's that gonna do for our clients? What's it gonna do for people like me who really need it as an outreach? But after, after listening to what he had to say and then listening to the ladies that spoke up, it's, it's really prevalent what he, what he's doing here. He's being a real motivational factor for the, for the people that we do work for. And we do a lot of good deeds and services for these young men that we record and do music for. And I just feel like after, after seeing how, how big of a move he's trying to do for our community, they're gonna be really, really inspired to become more and become something greater than just a rap artist or a studio recording artist. Maybe they want to be a business owner. So I feel like he, what he's doing is he's showing the work and letting it speak for himself, you know? So thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Sherman Wells, forty-seven eighteen Kansas Avenue. I'm here as a proponent for Mr. Walker. Before, he was Mr. Walker with the building. He was Mr. Walker with the studio in his house that provided sessions for kids that was underprivileged and didn't have the money. So not only did he do that for years out of his own house, he taught a lot of people and helped a lot of people get aspirations for their music done. So I'm here as a proponent to support Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Other proponents today? We'll call you back up here in a minute, Mr. Walker, I'm gonna get through the public hearing. Are there any opponents?
President, to the President and the council, my name is Reverend Alvin P. McCruel, pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church located thirty-nine twelve North Sixteenth Street. And I can stand before the council to say to the council, while we support business and industry and we support Mr. Walker having a convenience store, we most firmly oppose the liquor license. We firmly oppose the liquor license because we know the effect that liquor has upon, can have upon a person. I know Mr. Walker personally. I know him to be a good neighbor. My concern is not with Mr. Walker and the convenience store. My concern is with persons who will come in and purchase alcohol at the liquor store and what those persons choose to do after they purchase this liquor or alcoholic beverages. Because we have, since we are next door to the place where he's talking about putting the convenience store, excuse me, we have had to go out and police the yard on a regular basis because of liquor bottles, beer cans, wine bottles being in the church yard and on the grounds. My concern is not with Mr. Walker, it's with others who might be drawing in, who will be doing this to the church that's next door. In years gone by, there used to be respect for God, respect for God's house. Persons would come down, come down the street drunk and be staggering and when they got close to the church would go over to the other side of the street, go past the church, and come back on the side of the, on the side where the church is. Nowadays, we have people who will take their liquor, whiskey, whatever, and sit on the church steps and drink it and leave their empty containers there. So our concern is not with Mr. Walker, it's with persons who will be consuming what he is selling. We are trying to minister to people who have addictions and alcohol is one of those addictions. So for us, it is not beneficial to have where persons can receive alcohol that close to where we're trying to minister to people who have addiction. We're trying to minister to people who have alcohol addiction, drug addictions, any kind of addiction that is bringing them down as an individual and which is causing undue problems or stress and strain on their family. So again, I would like to restate our opposition to the license and we as a, as a congregation hope you will hear our concern and certainly that you would act according to our wishes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Walker, if you could come forward, please. Hi, thank you. Thank you for a number of things, taking the time to come out today and presenting your case. Also, I'd like to thank you for taking phone calls from me as we talked throughout the week concerning this liquor license. I'd also like to thank Ms. Weston and Ms. Sexton, talk to you guys as well and again for you coming along with Sherman Wells coming forth to support this initiative. Mr. Alvin, the Reverend, we do want to take some considerations for some of the things that he spoke of regarding the bottles. Would you like to shed some light on that conversation?
Yes, I would. First, what I wanted to do was, you know, to the city council and particularly Ms. Johnson and most importantly of all, to Ms. Westwood, to Reverend McCruel, to Reverend, to Dan Gilwin Jr., and last, to Ms. Sexton. I really appreciate you presenting me with the opportunity to speak to everyone. One of the things that was important to me in the midst of my conversating with these people, with these individuals, was to make sure that everyone understood that my failure to not have any communication or contact with them had nothing to do with neglecting the process or not believing it was important is actually the opposite. It just had everything to do with me never having gone through this process before. I spoke to someone earlier and I mentioned to them that I chose to do so without counsel, without any representation. I am a probation parole officer, I have some familiarity with the system, but I really wanted to do this on my own to learn, learn the process and learn the things that I would go through what I consider negative.
So would you consider the bottles in terms of making sure that that's kept up? That's, I guess that's why I was leading.
Right, and I wanted to bring that, I wanted to just mention that, you know, I spent a lot of time, first of all, I didn't take your, your direction for granted. And we had the hearing on Tuesday and as all of them can attest to, Wednesday morning, eight o'clock, I was on the phone. By six o'clock in the evening, I was probably spent over five hours, you know, in communication and contact, a long conversations. There's not one individual that I had less than an hour conversation with. My intention was not at all to address the liquor license. And they can all tell you that in over five hours of communication, that might have been touched on in five minutes because that was not relevant for me. What was most important was those individuals that don't know me or that didn't know me. It was imperative for me that they understood what I stand for and understand my character and most importantly, that they understood what is important to me. One of the other things that was extremely important, extremely important to establish was the timeline. And I was able to do that fairly quickly. With all due respect, you know, I know Reverend McCruel personally. When I called him, he answered the phone, brother Ramar Walker, how you doing? How can I help you?
Right, thank you for all of that, but can I?
But I say, I would say that, one of the things I was able to establish was that I was not responsible for the debris, the trash, the bottles. It never has occurred on my watch. In fact, even without me doing any type of events, I've always made sure that, that my immediate neighborhood was clean. Doesn't do me any good to have a clean property and something next to me was an issue. So between what I've done previously and what I will continue to do in the future is I will always look out for the church. I've also made certain other plans as far as how I'm gonna do this, you know, as far as operating the store. I mentioned the hours of operation to include. I would not sell alcohol before twelve o'clock on Sundays, although we would be open at eight AM. Now, these are things that I took into consideration before I even started this process. So I hear those concerns, I'm not responsible for them, but I also know that for sure that he wouldn't have to worry about that. And he doesn't have to worry about it now because I would definitely be participating in making sure that my neighborhood is clean.
Thank you for all of that. So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we accept this. I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the approval of this liquor license.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments, Mr. Walker. Right. This is a textbook way on how to give outreach to the community and I know you were forthright in your testimony last council meeting. You didn't purposely mislead anyone, you just maybe didn't know the entire process and that's okay. I appreciate you reaching out like you did and I, I think you'll be a tremendous asset to the community as you already have been in your service.
Thank you, sir.
As a probation officer, I believe you said, right?
Probation parole, thank you, sir.
For anybody out there listening that wants to go through a process of this, it's a good learning lesson as it is for everybody, that do the outreach before and I'm not criticizing you for this because you didn't know.
Right.
But people that want to get liquor licenses, talk to your council member, talk to the neighborhood folks, talk to the pastors, the churches, talk to anybody because the more outreach, I think you would agree, the more outreach you do, even if there's bumps in the road, you navigate those on your own through the process and then it gets us. So I just wanted to let you know that, that I appreciated the outreach you did and you admitted, hey, maybe I should have done this before, but it's a good learning process. So I'm gonna support this today and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I agree with all those comments. Only thing I'd also add is we do have a number of liquor licenses that were delayed on our agenda today and that's because we do expect the applicant on those liquor licenses to either be with us in person or by Zoom when their items come up and I want to reinforce that to you along with Councilmember Bagley's comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you, City Council.
Item twenty-five, to consider a Class D liquor license for Mega Saver located at nine five one six Calhoun Road.
This item was also postponed from January eleventh. The public hearing and vote are today. We have the proponent by Zoom, I believe. Lola Kalikova, I think you're off mute, just want to give your name and address.
Good afternoon, my name is Lola Kalikova. Address is two oh two South Seventy-third Street. Here applying for liquor license for our new Mega Saver store on ninety-five sixteen Calhoun Road. I'm open to answer any questions or concerns.
Thank you. I believe we also have another applicant, Kamol Samiev. We'll get you off mute here in a minute. All right? Here in a minute?
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, good afternoon, my name is Kamol Samiev. I am with Mega Saver Stores. I am here to answer any questions you have. The address is nine five one six Calhoun Road.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today on number twenty-five? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Jojo's Diner West located at one three one one zero Birch Drive, Suite one hundred.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Alex Mullen. I am the operations manager for the Jojo's Diner. My address is forty-five forty-nine Seward Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for L Street Lounge located at four seven two seven South Ninety-sixth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Caitlin Munson, forty-seven twenty-seven South Ninety-sixth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one two seven.
Alfredo Diaz, fourteen ten Lawrence Lane, Bellevue, Nebraska. Home address.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? I'll second it. I'll second that. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-eight, to consider a Class C liquor license for Pub one thirty-four located at three zero one five North Ninetieth Street, Suite five.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Lance LeBron for representing Pub one three four LLC at thirty fifteen North Ninetieth Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item twenty-nine, to consider a Class I liquor license for Chuck E. Cheese is located at two two five North Seventy-sixth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Daniel Marsh for Chuck E. Cheese at two twenty-five North Seventy-sixth. With apologies, if we had done our paperwork properly, we would have continued our previous license.
No problem, thanks for being here. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item thirty, to consider a Class I liquor license for Finnegan's Pub and Grill located at four three zero nine South Hundred and Twentieth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty is today. We have a proponent by Zoom, Mike Kelly.
Mr. President.
Gotcha.
Members of the council, Mike Kelly, twenty-eight oh four South Eighty-seventh Avenue. The applicant here is a longtime employee, taking over Finnegan's out on Hundred and Twentieth Street approximately. We're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-one, to consider a Class IB liquor license for Bar thirty-nine located at three nine one six Farnum Street.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-one is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, Sean Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, two eight zero four South Eighty-seventh Avenue, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. This is actually just a corporate restructure of Bar thirty-nine, so nothing's changes, changing here, just the mechanism we had to do to change it and that we're here today. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
We've had a request from Councilman Ochoa to remove number thirty-three. So first we'll take number thirty-two, thirty-four through forty-three and those public hearings were held on January eleventh. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
Number thirty-three now is up for discussion or any lights. Number 33 now is up for discussion or any lights or motions. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did ask this to be a resumption of the consent agenda, only because I received some communication through the last two weeks about it. I think there was some confusion. We approved this by resolution back in July, and it was a six to one vote. So I'm not here to rehash that vote, but I did want to clear up that it's not a new $17,500 in tip money. This is just a clarification and a cleanup of the language and the agreement that we approved back in July. So I don't expect there to be any discussion, but there was some confusion, some questions asked, and I wanted to make sure that we addressed that.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? Motion and second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 33 is approved, six to one.
The public hearings on agenda items number 44 through 74 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. We do have the applicant on number 44 by Zoom, if councilmembers wish. All right, I don't see any proponents or opponents on these items. Councilmembers? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 44 through 74 approved, seven to zero. Item 75, an ordinance to amend Chapter 13, Article 2, Division 2 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Human Rights A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Law Department.
Item number 75 was postponed from our last two meetings. The public hearing has been closed. The vote can be today. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
President, Dr. Thompson, may I have you come up, please?
Franklin Thompson, 1819 Farnum Street.
First, I didn't get a chance to thank you for all your hard work and your department's work on the Martin Luther King Day activities and the competitions. So thank you on behalf of the city for doing that.
And thank you for your support.
Absolutely. So we talked a little bit about this at pre-council today, and just wanted to, for the record, have a conversation for what I believe is your preference, to move ahead with what the original ordinance was, which I'll call the compromise with the mayor's office, if you will, and have you address that issue. And again, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think that's your preferred path going forward.
The best solution is the Law Department's solution. Two years ago, I came before the council, not in this formal setting, asking for the 11 board to be filled. For whatever reason, that didn't happen. And so over the last two years, we looked at alternatives. And the alternative that Ms. Huldquist came up with is actually the best solution for this particular problem. And the problem is that HUD demands that we have the substantial equivalency with our sister cities, and they have taken care of making sure that this type of board is in, is in, in play. We've gone since 1998 without it. So the best way to resolve that problem is with the compromise for the solution that the Law Department came up with. And that's what I prefer.
Okay. And then, and this has been laid over, I think, a couple of times, I believe.
Yes.
And then an amendment of the whole is also on our agenda today, which I think Councilmember Johnson and others have been working on. And again, I think you've identified that it is maybe a solution, but again, probably the solution that you think is probably more preferable and less onerous to work with would be the original proposal. Is that correct?
The original proposal is not only better, I think it's superior. Now, does the amendment of the whole solve some of the HUD issues? Yes, it does, if, and there's a bunch of things that have to happen for that to work. But the reason why the Law Department's version works the best is because we're asking a group that already meets monthly to then have a second board pulled out of that board, and they are on the ground working in this area all the time. Whereas the original design, which I think is a faulty design, relies on kind of an on-call board. And it may cause confusion to have 11 people on-call, and you yourself may get complaints from the person that you nominate. Why did you nominate me on a board that doesn't meet unless the client wants it to meet? So it's, I think the Law Department's decision is cleaner, it's more efficient, and it works the best. Now, but I do need some kind of resolution because I'm the one in the crossfire that has to answer to HUD.
And we don't want you in the crossfire, so I'm sure we'll resolve this today. But so to summarize a little bit what you said, too, is that on the board that's with the amendment of the whole, they don't meet on a regular basis. It's a, it's a larger board, I believe, correct?
It would be 11 members.
Yeah.
And they only meet when a complainant, sometimes I use the word client, wants to use them. So the majority of our cases, overwhelming majority, I would say 90% of our cases are going to be resolved through court or through mediation. Only once in a blue moon will somebody say, I want to go before an administrative board. And one of the reasons why that happens, and please correct me, Mr. McUsy, if I'm wrong, but one of the reasons why that happens is because the redress that you get going to court is better than what you get from going before an administrative board. So just naturally, people are not going to go before the administrative board. Still, HUD requires it for substantial equivalency ratings.
It would seem to, to me, to be a much more efficient process, as you pointed out, with a board that's meeting on a regular schedule and an ability to pull from that board on these matters, and rather than having a board that is called as needed and might not be for months at a time, and therefore maybe not even top of mind for someone on that board who all of a sudden has something else scheduled. It just seems to be a more efficient process with having, as you said, the board from which is in place to pull from, rather than create another board that meets only as needed and might not have maybe as much, I'll say, experience or education or awareness of the matters at hand. Would that be a fair assessment?
I think the main confusion is that there are some people thinking we're going from one, from two boards down to one. Actually, we're going to have two boards. We're just going to create the second board, separate meetings, everything, out of the first board. And I would also like to say that for a very, very long time, the mayor wanted the 11 board, 11-member board to be filled, but for whatever reason, it didn't get filled. So we still had to do something, and we feel that this something is the best solution, is the most efficient.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. Knowing that, and I think the great job you do as director of your department, I'd make a motion to approve the original ordinance that's on our agenda.
Second. Motion and second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes. I presented to this body the attached ordinance that authorizes the city human rights and relations board and the civil rights hearing board to coexist as separate and distinct entities with the separation of duties and responsibilities consistent with the original intent of the ordinance as written, with the proposed revision as submitted herein. The purpose of this ordinance is to assure strict compliance with the original intent of the ordinance, assure the continued compensation of civil rights hearing board is consistent with the original intent of the ordinance authorizing 11 members, including those of protected class. Provide timeframes for nominations and appointment of members in civil rights hearing board consistent with the original intent of the ordinance. Provide for addition of appointing a hearing examiner to conduct investigations, subpoena witnesses, and issue findings with the level of experience and expertise of a licensed attorney in the state of Nebraska to assure timely processing of complaints consistent with the original intent of the ordinance as written. While your department does an outstanding job, what I'm afraid and what citizens in Omaha are concerned about is the fact that the, this does not give an ability to not have conflict of interest. It also does not provide a space or an element where individuals in that protected class will feel comfortable coming to your board that is directly reporting to the mayor. So I think this was the original intent of the ordinance when it was designed on the charter some time ago. And to do away with this simply because we, and not necessarily me, but members of this city council was not able to fill those 11 positions two years ago, as you mentioned, simply is not good enough to withhold the, to maintain the integrity of ensuring the rights of the protected class. I think we need an outside group to have the ability to make the environment that the complainant is coming to, be able to come there and into this space and present their case, present their possible harm without feeling insecure or feeling threatened because they feel that it's not going to go anywhere. I think it's necessary for us to have this bridge to allow citizens in this protected class to be able to freely report an offense or a possible discrimination charge that they may have. So for that reason, that's why I made this recommendation. Not only, I believe that it's been two years. Today is a different day. We have individuals in the community that want to be active participants to helping and be a part of the political process. They're willing to do that. I believe that we can't look at the fact that we weren't able to fill this position two years ago, 11 members. We have to look at today's day and time. That ability is there. That's opportunities. So for that reason, I stand for the proposal that I put forth to this ordinance.
I can't speak 100% for HUD, but I have to be honest and say that either one fulfills the HUD requirement. The larger board, they might be skeptical that we can do it because we haven't done it for 22-plus years. So when they looked at the compromise, they signed off on the compromise because they knew we could get that done. I'm not 100% sure that they think we can get an 11-board, 11-member board done. Having said that, though, it is either way would satisfy HUD. If you're asking for my professional opinion, the best way to go is the compromise that the Law Department came up with. And I would like to use my 16 years on the council and my 44 years in working in the area of human rights as backing up for making that recommendation. But I, I am here to do whatever the council feels is necessary, and it's in your court. I believe my recommendation is the best, but I will honor whatever the council comes up with.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted, again, Dr. Thompson, I appreciate your work that you put into this and the time, and there's been a lot of effort from law and others in speaking to colleagues on this, so I just wanted to put that on the record that I do appreciate the outreach you've given and the work you've put into this. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Mr. President. Sorry, Dr. Thompson, let me get back to this one part. So I want to thank Councilmember Johnson for thinking of a different way to go about this board that is needed, right? Whether you have two boards that have similar people making different decisions or not, but all along, my main problem with this has been 11. Because if you've heard me speak about other boards that are important to this city as well, people aren't showing up to them. Appointments that are being made, they're not there, and it affects us. Things are referred to us with approval or denials based on board members being placed in these important spots. But there's two ways this is going to go. This is going to keep dragging on regardless of which part we vote on because... Let me, let me ask the city attorney, if I could, a question.
Mr. McUsy, city attorney.
So with this ordinance change, obviously requested through law, if we only have four votes, is this something the mayor could veto? Question mark.
Four votes for the ordinance?
Yes.
Of course.
Okay. I mean, I knew the answer.
Okay.
But I wanted people to hear that if we only have four votes, we're back to square one. You're back in front of us because we will have to have this again. I don't believe, the way I'm seeing this, that it's going to make it through without getting vetoed, and that's just what it is. And I do have a problem with the 11-person panel. I always did, because I just know you're not going to find the people. A couple of us could easily find constituents that would probably serve on this board, but it's going to be tough throughout the city, not to mention, you're going to ask them to show up, but you can't tell them when, and you can't tell them how often. There's no set guidelines of, you know, how much commitment this is going to be. So that's where I find myself currently with this change, to be honest. And you didn't have to give me your bio. We know you're in the spot you're in because you know what you're talking about, so, but it's nice to remind us. Appreciate it. Thank you, doctor.
Mr. Palermo, the, I think the linchpin here is that HUD took three months to look this over. this over, and they came back and said, "We're good with it." So I think, I really think we ought to go with it.
If I could, Mr. President, just so we're clear, you're saying they're good with it. What were they good with?
With the compromise.
Okay.
They signed off on the compromise as being something that is legit and it would satisfy their criteria.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
No, thank you. I just wanted to be clear. I mean, you have the support of the mayor on this compromise, correct?
The mayor prefers the compromise, and I haven't spoken to her today, but I'd be surprised if she's for the amendment of the whole.
Right. The, well, right now, I believe, Mr. Harding, what we have is, the motion is to vote on the original, what you proposed, and that you did work out with the mayor.
Yes. In fact, it actually originated between a discussion that she and I had three years ago, trying to figure out, why has 22 years gone by and we can't seem to fill an 11-member board? So we started talking about what other avenue can we take so that we don't stay out of compliance.
So this is literally something you started working on very shortly after you became the director?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was a prime directive from the mayor and from HUD, and it felt at times that I was seeing the walls closing from two sides.
But I want, but I mean, what I want to be clear of is, this isn't something that you came up with a couple of months ago. This is something you've actually been working on for a couple of years.
That's correct. In the beginning, under a different director, we were told that the compromise would not fly. And then, then we took a second look at it under new leadership, and then we found a way that it could fly, but HUD had to sign off on that.
Okay.
And so we gave it to HUD for three months. They took a look at it and then wrote us back at the end, about the middle of, beginning of November, saying, "It's good. Go with it."
And that, and that's the one that we're voting on right now?
Yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify that, because it may be that somebody is just hearing that for the first time, but I know how much time you've put in to this and the number of years you've actually been putting into this that finally culminated in bringing it to us and getting it passed. So I thank you, Dr. Thompson, for your continued tenacity and in making sure that this is getting done and getting done the right way.
But I don't want to be a crybaby. I understand that things at City Hall are tough, and that's just the lay of the land, but I do have a report that's eight days late.
Yes.
And the main thing in that report is this board.
And we know that they'll approve what we're voting, what's currently being voted on, on the next vote.
Chances are, they'll approve both.
Okay.
Either or. They just want Omaha to make up its mind and get going with it.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Doctor, a couple more questions for you, if I could. So regardless if 75 is moved and passed or moved and denied, and we move on to the amendment of the whole, and it's passed or it's denied, are you open and willing, regardless of, like you just said, you're not a crybaby, I'm going to hold you to that, are you open and willing regardless of what's passed today, if we had to go back to the drawing board for changes?
My statement is that I'm, I want to satisfy HUD requirements.
Okay.
Either one of these will satisfy that. The current law department compromise not only satisfies it, but it solves and heads off a lot of future problems and issues. It's cleaner, it's more efficient.
Okay. And the original ordinance that we have in front of us, 75, that was moved?
Yes.
Has how many people?
It would be a board of three.
Okay.
And at the last meeting, I thought we were heading a little different route. I thought the amendment was going to be to change the three to five, but somehow that didn't materialize. But that's what I thought we were doing.
And these appointments, I assume, obviously will be vetted, they'll come from a list? How many people do you have prepared?
It would be, it's, the board, the HRR board is nine people, and then from that nine, three or whatever number you decide will be pulled out of that on-call emergency, and they will sit as a separate board with an adjudicator. And the adjudicator does all of the work and then turns it over to that board and says, "This is what I feel this complaintant, this client," I call them clients, "deserves to get." And then the board agrees or disagrees with the adjudicator.
So the nine-person board currently, how, give me the numbers of the last time they were together and how many people showed up?
They're, they're there every month.
Okay.
There's, it's a five-member board, and the other four members of the board, new members, have been pushed through Mr. Warren to complete the board.
Okay. Out of them five, last month that met?
Yes.
How many were there?
My assistant, Gerald Kuhn, is the ex-officio. He actually attends those, and he's out of town right now, so I'd have to ask him to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Very rarely do I attend those meetings because it's his duty to do so.
Sure. And that's a tough question.
Yes.
Had I thought of that pre-council, I would have asked you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you. I guess as a follow-up to Mr. Palermo. Well, if we went with the larger board with the requirement of the 11, how much latitude is HUD going to give us if they don't function properly? If you don't have them show up, like has happened for the last 22 years? I guess what I'm asking is, what are the consequences if they don't show up?
You know, I'll never paint HUD as the big bear or, you know, the ogre, but they have within their wherewithal to start messing with CDBG monies, 75 North monies, things in South Omaha. They can really, it can really get ugly if they decide that Omaha doesn't want to be like its sister cities. So there's always that potential. Actually, I'm glad that they've been flexible, as they have been for so long, but they're telling me it's time to fix it. And they began saying that in 2019. I may have even given Mr. Douding a, some kind of communication from them saying, "We're not happy with any of the mayors," the one now or two or three before this one. And so they're getting at the end of their rope on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion, a second, to approve item number 75 as originally introduced. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yep.
Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
No.
Item 75 is approved, five to two.
Thank you.
Item 76, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Weeds Group 2022-01A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number 76 is today. Is there a motion? Amendment of the whole?
Amendment of the whole.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment of the whole for item 76 is approved, seven to zero. Item 77, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Litter Group 2022-02A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number 77 is today.
Motion to approve the amendment of the whole.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment of the whole for item 77 is approved, seven to zero. Item 78, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement in the amount of $500,000 for the Lori and Joshua Schuman versus City of Omaha.
Public hearing on vote on number 78 is today. Proponents, please.
May I ask you, City of Omaha Law Department here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 78 is approved, seven to zero. Item 79, an ordinance approving an interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District for the construction of drainage structure rehabilitation for Little Papio Creek Levy Channel project in the amount of $800,000.
Public hearing on item number 79 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 80, an ordinance to accept the bid from Executive Janitorial Corp. for janitorial services for the Missouri River Water Resource Recovery Facility at a cost of $29,100 per year for a period of one year.
Public hearing on number 80 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 81, an ordinance to approve a streetscape maintenance agreement with the Omaha Performing Arts Society concerning the allowable streetscape and landscape improvements in the right-of-way and the private maintenance and liability obligations.
Public hearing on number 81 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 82, an ordinance to approve amendment number one to streetscape and surface maintenance agreement with Creighton University concerning the allowable streetscape and landscape improvements in the right-of-way and the private maintenance and liability obligations.
Public hearing on number 82 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 83, an ordinance to designate the historic Elkhorn Town Hall located at 20515 Corby Street as a landmark. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 83 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing, is there a proponent? Come on down.
Hello. Tyler Kearns, 2610 North Main Street in Elkhorn. Yeah, I just wanted to be up here. Hi, Brinker. But just wanted to go through and say, hopefully, everything's good to go with that. The building itself, over 100 years old, historically speaking, it has a lot of really unique qualities there. The first jail cell of Elkhorn, there's actually a bank vault in there for all of the documentation throughout all of Elkhorn's history. It was established in 1904, and all the way up until 1966, I believe, it was the town hall for downtown Elkhorn. So again, you know, I don't think we'll have anybody here that is an opponent, but you know, I think it'll be a wonderful addition to Elkhorn.
Thank you. Thanks for providing that history. Any other proponents today?
Hello, my name's Shelly McCafferty. I am the Preservation Administrator with the Planning Department. I've worked with Mr. Kearns in getting this through the Commission and the Planning Board, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have regarding this issue.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Thank you.
Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Tyler, I was trying to catch you before you went all the way back up, but if you have a minute to come back down, I had a couple of questions.
Hello.
Yeah, put your name and your address on the record again, yeah?
Tyler Kearns, 2610 North Main Street.
So, and you've purchased this building, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, I believe, in our discussions, you've told me that, which I found a little interesting and hard to believe, that this would be the first historic building or historic designation for a building in Elkhorn. Is that correct?
Correct. So with it, the local landmarking, from my understanding, the closest building to this with the local landmarking would be on 144th or 156th. I can't quite know right off the top of my head. And so on that, it would be the first local landmark for downtown Elkhorn, especially in a building. And on the national level, which is additionally what I'm going for, it'll be nationally recognized as the very first building in downtown Elkhorn to be obviously recognized. We, the only things that are close to it are the Old Lincoln Highway, and obviously that's just a small portion of it, not a building, but overall, this would be the first recognized historic building in Elkhorn.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your investment in Elkhorn, too.
Thank you.
No further lights. Next item.
Item 84, an ordinance to approve the 214 Pierce Town Homes Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 84 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Bob Griffith, 11440 West Center Road, also here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on 84? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 85, an ordinance to authorize and accept a grant award for the City of Omaha Police Department in the amount of $347,126 to fund the Threat Assessment and Response Project during the project period of January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023.
Public hearing on number 85 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi. Lieutenant Charles, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th, here for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 86, an ordinance to accept the bid from Body Basics for a three-year price agreement for the maintenance and repair of exercise equipment at Omaha Police Department facilities.
Public hearing on number 86 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 87, an ordinance to accept and authorize disbursement from the Department of Justice, United States Marshal Service Joint Law Enforcement Operations Task Force in the amount of $100,937 during the project period of October 12th, 2021, to September 30th, 2022, to be utilized by the Omaha Police Department to support overtime operations.
Public hearing on number 87 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 88, an ordinance to accept and authorize disbursement over more than one fiscal year from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Fiscal Year 2021, Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant Program in the amount of $119,195 during the project period extending from October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2024, to implement the five core elements of PSN.
Public hearing on number 88 is today. Proponents, please.
Amber Parker, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street, here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on 88? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 89, an ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquid storage district, number B207, located at 11707 Merka Hills Drive.
Public hearing on number 89 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 90 and 91. Ordinance is to approve coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund agreements to administer City of Omaha Rescue Act program funds with the Omaha Community Foundation in the amount of $9,600. to administer City of Omaha Rescue Act program funds with the Omaha Community Foundation, the amount of nine million six hundred thousand, and the United Way of the Midlands in the amount of five million dollars.
Public hearings on numbers ninety and ninety-one are today, proponents please. Ms. Kush.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the entire council. Donna Kush, Omaha Community Foundation CEO and President, eleven-twenty South one-hundred-first Street. The Community Foundation is one of the largest, the Omaha Community Foundation is one of the largest in the U.S. Last year alone, we processed seventeen thousand grants to three thousand nonprofits. We are very proud to stand here today to partner with the City of Omaha and United Way of the Midlands to be facilitating ARPA, the ten million dollar ARPA Community Grant Program. The last two years, we've had some good visibility into what's been going on in our community during the pandemic, especially with the public health and economic conditions and impact that have fallen most severely on populations that were already disadvantaged. This ten million dollar grant program that we'll be facilitating will focus on two areas. We'll be working with nonprofits who focus on decreasing and preventing violence throughout our community. And the second area is to increase workforce development programs that involve training and employment or under, helping with underemployment. These two areas were identified by both resident feedback to the city as well as from the mayor's COVID task force. Following federal guidance, the focus on these nonprofits will be those that are located in and/or serving residents located within of one of the qualified census tracts. This program is going to be focused on meaningful investments within those QCTs that both expand and enhance existing programs. This one-time infusion of funds is a very unique opportunity for our community to have significant impact with measurable community benefits. Our goal is to help push forward the strong and innovative work that's already happening. I have just a couple of slides I may need some help with.
Sure, just put that all the way up, uh, all the way up and then it'll, it'll pick it up for you. Just takes a second.
These will help explain our experience in this area as well as the process.
And on top, you can focus or, uh, focus out.
So, as I mentioned earlier, we had some good visibility into what was going on last year, largely due to what you see here. So since the beginning of the pandemic, we were responding to short, very urgent needs in the community and longer-term needs as well. So through our own discretionary funds, we were able to contribute the one point five million and half a million to nonprofits that were helping again in those short and long-term areas. In addition to that, we partnered to help facilitate twenty-eight million to two hundred and forty-two nonprofits with over three hundred grants, uh, twenty-eight million though in CARES Act funds. The grant making that we would be doing in this ten million dollar program is really just a natural extension of that earlier work. So that, along with that work that I mentioned, the seventeen thousand grants that, to the three thousand nonprofits, together that and our COVID response grant making would not be possible without the capacity, the expertise combined with the infrastructure that we have in place at the Community Foundation. So that infrastructure includes our staff, our online grant portal, and other tools and mechanics. All of these resources allow us to do this work for this grant program, the ten million dollar grant program, in a four-month timeline and provide the necessary and ongoing monitoring and reporting that will be required over the next two years, and that is because we'll be aligning with Treasury guidance. This next slide. This next slide helps show our timeline. Uh, the important pieces here, especially for the public to know, are that the grant application process will start on February fifteenth. It'll last for six weeks and close on April first. We'll be announcing the funding, our plan is to announce the funding decisions by mid to end June, by mid to the end of June. Now during that application process, our goal and our plan and what we did with some of our other pandemic grant, uh, especially with the CARES Act grant making, was to provide technical assistance. So this technical assistance is, uh, on a couple of different fronts. First, we're going to be hosting webinars. You see the dates for the three of those there. More information can be found on those on our website and registration for those, as well as one-on-one support that we'll be, we'll be providing. Uh, we have a dedicated email and phone line as well to help with that. This is really especially important, um, this training and technical assistance to those eligible nonprofits to help navigate those federal guidelines and requirements, especially for smaller organizations who aren't as familiar with how to navigate that. As far as communications and making sure that nonprofits know about this, we'll be doing a, we'll be, uh, implementing a multi-channel communications plan, leveraging, uh, our existing nonprofit relationships. We'll be using traditional as well as digital communication channels. Uh, and then we'll also be working with community leaders, uh, and as I said, those nonprofits that we have relationships with to help get the word out. And then also to help further help with accessibility and ensure accessibility, we'll be providing translation service to any organization who might need that. This is very hard to read. The main point, two main points kind of that I want to get across with this, though. This is the workflow that we'll be following with this grant-making process. The whole idea here is not just to demonstrate the workflow, but the transparency of this process. In addition to the internal grant-making team at OCF, we're, we're going to be creating a community review process to help make those funding decisions. We are going to have a grant selection committee that'll be comprised of residents who serve on one of our five community interest funds. Those community interest funds are our resident-led grant-making programs that we have. Plus, we'll have representatives from the city and OCF serving on those. Priority is going to be given to residents who live in the qualified census tracts, and we expect to have about eight to twelve, uh, residents serving on that committee. We really appreciate the longer runway that we have with this ARPA grant making, which is going to allow us more time for this community engagement and resident decision-making. Another important aspect on here, um, and I should have mentioned those, uh, those key areas are, are in yellow and red there on this slide. But another important aspect is that once grant determinations are made, we'll be launching a public-facing dashboard on our site to help track the outcomes and impact as is required by the quarterly reports that will be filed by the nonprofits. So with that, I thank you. Thank you to the City of Omaha, and thank you to the council for this opportunity to partner.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the overview. Other proponents please on item ninety-one.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Matt Wallen, twenty-two oh one Farnham Street in downtown Omaha. I'm here representing United Way of the Midlands. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. I know many of you are familiar with United Way. We are humbled to serve as a trusted steward of dollars in Omaha for nearly a hundred years, investing in programs to address our region's evolving challenges. Through this partnership, we will leverage our infrastructure and capacity to allocate funding to programs in the City of Omaha that address social and economic disparities by supporting basic needs. Our Community Investment Review Team Process, or CERT, includes engaging about a hundred and fifty community volunteers to ensure decision-making includes community input. We will leverage the CERT process to invest in a diverse mix of nonprofit agencies offering programs to support residents to recover from the COVID-nineteen pandemic in the City of Omaha. Following council's full consideration of the contract, United Way will begin to accept applications from agencies providing basic needs programs in the city. Our timeline includes grant application and submission taking place in February. Volunteers will review and score them in March and April. Funding decisions will take place in May with final approval in early June. Programs will receive grant awards beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. To receive funding, agencies offering basic needs programs will be asked to complete United Way's community investment application, including additional ARPA-specific questions to ensure funds are spent in accordance with federal eligibility requirements. When reviewing applications, we will work closely with the Omaha Community Foundation to ensure agencies are not seeking funding for the same program from both organizations. Within basic needs category, funding will be available for grants to expand and/or enhance existing programs and services, grants to implement COVID-nineteen prevention or mitigation measures, grants to mitigate financial hardship. In addition to funding eligibility requirements, we also understand the requirement that programs must meet federal guidelines and have the capacity for award reporting. We will assess all applicants' ability to comply with federal requirements and offer technical assistance when necessary. Our grant application for ARPA funding will be published, published through our website, social media channels, and proactive outreach to hundreds of agency and community contacts. Additionally, we will offer on-demand training webinar, FAQs, scheduled office hours, and one-on-one assistance where needed. As I mentioned, we anticipate CERT volunteers will begin reviewing and scoring applications in March. The community members and subject matter experts meet several times to ensure the funds are awarded to programs making the most significant impact in the community while addressing the highest area of need. This thorough and deliberative process will support funding recommendations made by the volunteer teams. Our volunteer recruitment process welcomes volunteers from the community at large. Attention to diversity is incorporated in the scoring matrix as we prioritize programs that support hard-to-reach populations and embed equity into their governance and service delivery methods. Funding recommendations will be approved by United Way's Community Impact Committee and Board of Directors. The City of Omaha may designate individuals to serve on CERT teams reviewing ARPA applications for funding and designate individuals to serve on the Community Impact Committee who will review final funding recommendations. Prior to executing grant agreements, United Way will send the City of Omaha a list of team-approved allocation decisions for ARPA funding. We appreciate the opportunity to partner with the City of Omaha and the Omaha Community Foundation on the disbursement of these ARPA funds. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the City Council, Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office, eighteen nineteen Farnham. Uh, would like to read into the record a letter to be submitted, uh, by Mayor Stothard. The American Rescue Plan Act provides a unique opportunity to address significant needs in our city with the fiscal recovery funds. While the primary use of these funds is intended for local governments to replace revenue losses, the money can also be used to support community programs, respond to pandemic impacts, and promote economic recovery. We expect to receive one hundred and twelve million dollars. With the portion of the city's first allocation, we will invest fifteen million dollars in community programs to improve the well-being, safety, and financial recovery of our citizens. This is the largest amount of grant money that the city has ever awarded to nonprofit organizations. The United Way of the Midlands and the Omaha Community Foundation will work in partnership to distribute these funds to qualifying nonprofit organizations with a focus on agencies located in or providing services in the qualified census tracts. The Community Grants Program will deliver services directly to communities disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. The United Way of the Midlands and Omaha Community Foundation are established trusted grant-making partners and will manage the funds to make the largest impact possible and ensure compliance with the federal requirements. The United Way of the Midlands will administer five million dollars in categories that address basic needs, including access to food and shelter, services for persons experiencing homelessness, access to healthcare, behavioral and mental health services, health promotion and education, financial literacy and family support. The Omaha Community Foundation will administer ten million dollars in categories including workforce development and violence intervention and prevention. Eligible programs could include youth programs such as mentoring, gang prevention intervention, mental health, crisis response, and assistance to unemployed workers, including workforce readiness, training, certification, and employment services. The Community Grants Program is included in the city's initial recovery plan submitted to the United States Department of Treasury, available for public review on the City of Omaha website. It has been reviewed by Deloitte and is in compliance with the requirements of the American Rescue Plan Act. It also aligns with areas of need identified by the Nonprofit Association of the Midlands. I encourage you to approve the contracts with the United Way of the Midlands and Omaha Community Foundation so that the application period can begin and we can remain on schedule to begin the allocation process. And I'm available to answer the questions that you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Cheryl Weston, uh, one-eight-one-one Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am a proponent of the program, of the, of the funds. I would just like so to have it put in the record. Everyone that spoke, you, you, Community Foundation, United Way, uh, Mr. Warren, it all sounds good, but what happens every single time is my community, North Omaha, seems to get the short end of the stick. I would hope that these folks will hold their feet to the fire. The Mayor's Office, Mr. Warren, will hold the Community Foundation, United Way, so that those who are impacted the most by this problem will receive the funds. Not the same, same, same old organizations seem to always get the funding and the small ones. As the young lady spoke about, the Community, Omaha Community Foundation was going to make all these things possible for smaller organizations. I hope that holds true. I hope they make that effort and stand by it. Same thing with United Way. And I hope that sometimes these volunteers, um, I talked to a lot of people in my community, and they don't seem to ever be chosen to be volunteers. So I just hope that this time, the City Council, when you approve, which you will, this contract, and I'm not opposed to that, is that sometimes we need to start looking out for what these funds are supposed to be set for. Those communities that are most hit. And North Omaha is a community that was most hit. We have the highest, uh, health problems, mental problems, um, homelessness problem, all of that. So I just hope that this time, that money will be done as it was supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Are, are you a proponent?
Yes, my name is Harry Urie, and I'd like to, and I'm at sixteen twenty-six Locust, Omaha. I wanted to say that, uh, and concur with the previous spokesperson in terms of the use of funds. Of time, there are funds that are, uh, dispersed throughout the, the community, and oftentimes, uh, the communities that are in most disparate condition receive less. I think it's imperative that the City of Omaha and the City Council look at how funds are received and how they are dispensed as far as evaluation is concerned. We're not opposed, of course, to monies coming into the community, particularly North Omaha. Uh, but as the previous spokesperson had said, oftentimes those funds are not, uh, not distributed in a manner that's equitable in terms of need. And, um, that goes also as far as the, uh, Police Department in terms of the funds that they receive. It's very imperative that there be a review and a look at how funds are received and how they're disp, how they're dispensed, uh, going forward. But, uh, as I said before, we're not opposed to that. I missed out a little earlier, uh, in terms of responding to the Human Relations, uh, Board in terms of the changes thereof. Uh, sometimes we gotta look back to look forward, and I, I didn't hear any assertion of opponents to express opponents to that, so that's why I didn't come up in time. I missed it. My, my error.
Yeah, sorry you missed it, but we need to stay on this topic right now.
We have to look back to go forward, and sometimes in looking at the history of North Omaha, we have to see what has been contributed. contributed to the wholesomeness of Omaha and Nebraska by those people that have gone before. And we have to provide an opportunity for young people to stay here in Omaha. That means, that means providing resources and providing programs that do their best to stay in the city. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Have a good day.
You too. Any other proponents today? Any opponents to ninety and ninety-one? I'm gonna close public hearing. Ms. Cushion, Mr. Wallen, if you could just come up for a minute, I've had a few follow-up questions for you today. Thanks for the overviews of how this is gonna work and through your various organizations that have a lot of expertise in this area, as you noted, and I think will do a good job in dispersing these funds to the community as soon as possible. And I think these are the right places to start in terms of the basic needs. We need to get to the community as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic and what ARPA provides. Just a couple of follow-up questions that are mostly the same to both of you, I think, in terms of process and how they will work. Maybe I'll start with the Community Foundation. And I want to make sure this is another two because we are mindful of how ARPA funds are gonna work in our community, and we want to maximize, of course, the funds that are getting to the community. So when these allocations are made, both to the Community Foundation and United Way, I believe there's a maximum fee of four percent that would be used to administer them, right?
Correct.
And all the rest of the money goes to the actual community?
Correct.
And same with United Way as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, Donna, you did a nice job talking about the process and how people can expect an application process from February until April, and the violence prevention and workforce development focus. I wanted to give you a chance to respond to the census tract question that was asked because I agree with that point that was made there, and I believe that is everyone's objective, is to maximize funds into certain census tracts as determined by the legislation, and for all intents and purposes in Omaha, that is North and South Omaha, right?
Correct. I can put this map up really quickly, too, just to make that point more clearly. This is the map of the qualified census tract. This will be the focus areas for the grant-making. So again, the, one of the first eligibility requirements is that the nonprofit is located in that area of the map, which is primarily North and South Omaha, District two, three, and four, I believe that is. And so it's, the nonprofit has to be located in that or serving residents and/or serving residents of that. So that will be one of the priority eligibility requirements.
Does the entity have to be located in the City of Omaha or not necessarily?
You would have to be located in the City of Omaha.
Okay, that's what I thought with City of Omaha ARPA funds.
Correct.
Thanks for that. You also talked a little bit about the process. Once these funds are allocated to Community Foundation, United Way, they do not come back to the City Council. They would be administered by, they would be considered allocated and be administered by your organizations. So you talked a little bit about the selection committee, which I thought was good, and how that'll work. I thought I heard right. Part of that selection committee for the Community Foundation will include a city representative and community foundation representatives, but also residents, right? I think you said eight to twelve members?
Yes, yeah, the Community Selection Committee, we have represented in, within the process as well as the City of Omaha itself involved in the grant-making selection process, in that actual decision-making process. But the selection committee will be eight to twelve residents.
And likely residents from the targeted areas we just discussed, right?
Correct. Priority will be given to those who are, live within the QCTs, within that map that I just showed.
I think that's appropriate. And have we determined who the city representative will be?
We have not yet.
Okay.
We have not determined any of the committee representatives yet.
Okay, I think that'll be important for coordination, and I think from our perspective to just the city's ongoing participation and how it will work. And also, I appreciate Mr. Wallen's comment about coordination between your two entities so that there aren't to be overlap, although you're generally handling different topics. I'm sure there are some organizations that will be seeking funds from both entities and just making sure that all makes sense together. I think it's important. Mr. Wallen, maybe your answer to, you provided timelines which are very similar to the public and how you might administer funds. I think you said May and June. Your selection committee, though, is a little bit different. A CERT committee that ultimately is determined by your Board of Directors, but there would be city participation in that, in those subcommittees as well, right?
Yes, we recruit about a hundred and fifty volunteers to participate in our CERT process, and those are representatives from all across the city, anybody our organization works with, members from the community at large. We do a pretty broad recruitment of those hundred and fifty volunteers.
Great. And similarly, we talked about the fee, right? Your fee is no more than four percent, is that the same?
No, four percent, that's correct.
And then your topics are a little bit different. Basic needs, food access, care coordination, shelter, and homeless prevention, which would have been handy this last weekend, for example, and we know is a big need throughout the community, but also health promotion, family support, and also one that's important to me, behavioral health. So I was encouraged to see that as part of the criteria, too. I think that's all the questions I have for now. The last thing I was gonna mention, we did also just have a meeting with the Mayor, Council Vice President, Claire Mo and I, on a number of different topics, but one thing we also discussed were these two allocations and our support for them, but also still making sure we are providing and planning for other allocations that include the twenty million dollars to affordable housing we've all talked about, and one that I'm also very interested in terms of ten million dollars to public spaces throughout the community. So those are yet to come. I want folks to know that that's still the plan, and it's still, and it's still quite possible with doing these two first. All right, thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Donna, I just had one question. Could you put that map back up, please? I know, I know the Missouri River jumped its bank at one time, but can you explain to me the shaded area on the Potawatomi County side of the river?
In this one?
Yeah.
I'm not even, I'm probably not qualified to explain that.
Okay.
An anomaly over there. And this is QCT overall, so that may explain why it wasn't necessarily just within...
But again, I think President Festerson asked about whether or not it had to be the City of Omaha.
Correct, yes, yeah. This is just a QCT map.
Okay.
Not necessarily, but yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. No further lights. I'll just say thank you for the overview today. We look forward to working with you to make these funds available to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Next item.
One public hearing can be held for items ninety-two and ninety-three. A is communications in opposition. Item ninety-two, an ordinance to approve of a lease agreement with fourteen oh one Jones LLC for the lease of premises located at fourteen oh one Jones Street for use as a public library facility, beginning November first, two thousand and twenty-two or earlier, as provided for in the lease agreement, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year. Item ninety-three, an ordinance to approve of a lease agreement with Frederick Square Limited Partnership for the lease of premises located at three zero two zero South Eighty-fourth Street for use as administrative offices and associated storage for public library facilities, beginning March first, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred and five thousand dollars per year.
Thank you. The public hearings on items number ninety-two and ninety-three are today. I just, I know a lot of folks are here for these items, so I just wanted to get a sense ahead of time, if I could get a show of hands for who's here to support these items, and then who's here to oppose? Thank you. I do not intend to establish formal time limits, but I would encourage folks to stick with concise statements, you know, two or three minutes is generally what we like to see, and so that folks can not be repetitive, but we can get to everybody and hear from everybody's remarks, realizing that those that are proposing leases might have a little bit longer representation to get through some of those details. With that, we'll recognize proponents, Mr. Anderson from the Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kevin Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office, eighteen nineteen Farnham. I'll do my best to keep it limited in the purpose of equity. Here today to ask for your approval of two lease agreements associated with an exciting opportunity to further the recommendations of the library facilities' master plan, originally drafted in two thousand and ten and once again updated in two thousand and seventeen. And I say that because that plan specifically calls for and identifies the current W. Dale Clark Main Library as outdated, inefficient, and too large for the proper use for a modern downtown library branch. And so what these two lease agreements allow us to do is to start a process by which we can go through the proper procedures that will include additional City Council approvals for things like contracts associated with design of the facilities, for some of the funding mechanism that's going to be identified to pay for these types of improvements. But what these two lease processes allow us to do is get started on a process that will include some expertise of an owner's representative that will help navigate this process and navigate a stakeholder engagement process by which a lot of the public conversations and public input can be held relating to the design, functionality, and programming of these two new facilities to replace a lot of what's currently in the W. Dale Clark Library. The facilities' master plan calls for a downtown branch of about thirty thousand square feet, and that's what our first item, agenda item here exactly lays out. Thirty thousand square feet of usable branch space at fourteen oh one Jones Street. We have heard a lot of the same questions and concerns that you have all had. I plan to try to walk through a lot of those. I'm sure I'll forget some, so I'll make myself available for any questions. First and foremost is the timing of this proposed move, these lease agreements. And I'll say that a lot of that is driven by the tremendous opportunity transformative investment that relates to the Riverfront Parks Project and the anticipated opening of the Gene Leahy Mall, currently anticipated around Memorial Day of this year, two thousand and twenty-two. And what we'd like to do to drive that process is have a plan for the ultimate development of the surrounding sites for that process so that this body, the community, has a really good understanding of when that park opens, what's then going to be coming out of the ground to support that, and take advantage of that tremendous investment by both the city, the philanthropic community, and a lot of our partners in that riverfront revitalization process. So by the time that is open, we have a timeline laid out by which we are returning to this body with the appropriate discussion and approvals for some of the development in the surrounding sites of that tremendous community amenity. So that in itself is driving a lot of the timing here. But just as importantly is the availability of space, especially in the downtown market today. You know, I gotta tell you, the availability of existing thirty thousand square feet, as you look in the downtown market, there's not a lot there. And that drives a lot of our locational decision-making process that I'll get into. But then when you couple that with the availability of space, again, at the recommendation of the facilities' master plan, of moving things like distribution and special collections, some of the more popular kind of destination, community-wide destination elements like genealogy, to a more central location in our community to make those more accessible to the community at large. Having these two available spaces at the same time, you know, kind of feels like the stars aligning or planets aligning to allow us to take advantage of this opportunity and make a very transformative change for our library system as a whole. These opportunities don't come around too often, and we're very excited to engage in a process by which we can go through the public conversations of the design and programming of what we think can be library services that this community can be extremely proud of. So I'll get into a bit of some of the locational decision-making that went into our process. Out of the two thousand and seventeen updates to the facilities' master plan came an exercise in the mapping of where patrons of all of our branches are coming from by address and zip code. And this is, again, in two thousand and seventeen, but this is where our patrons of the current W. Dale Clark Library were originating from. So as you can see, we've got a pretty heavy concentration both to the south and west of the downtown area, largely centered around the urban core, but it does have a larger draw. You know, this is our main branch. It does have those more community-wide destination-type collections, genealogy being one of the more popular ones of that. But again, as you can see, a good majority of those patrons are coming from the immediate south and west neighborhoods of the downtown area. And this, again, two thousand and seventeen, this area, the rail and commerce area, you know, adjacent to the Old Market to the west, has seen a lot of residential development, a lot of development, but a lot of residential development even from that time. So I think that provides a really tremendous opportunity for additional connection to the neighborhood itself. But, you know, we do have a lot of patrons that come to the west, but you see, you know, the proximity to then our Sorensen branch, and that is where, this is that heat map that indicates you see a lot of overlap of those same neighborhoods. So, you know, we really didn't want to remove level of service, especially from a geographic standpoint. So the thought process being that, you know, as we move to the south of the current location of the W. Dale Clark, it does create some distance from the areas west and northwest of downtown where we see a lot of that patronage. But we do have the immediate kind of availability of Sorensen to serve those areas, and while the same case could potentially be made for Willa Cather, I'll let Laura Marlane correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Willa Cather is our smallest or among our smallest branches, so it doesn't have a ton of capacity to, you know, take in additional service. So that's why I say, you know, we try to keep this new location in as close proximity to the existing location as we could for things like accessibility type of questions. But that being said, this is where we feel the data really helps support, if we are going to move, moving to the south helps provide some medicinal services where we, you know, see it the most and where we think it might be needed the most as well. But again, as I mentioned, the plan also calls for the relocation of things like main distribution, some of our special collections, genealogy be a large one, that really are provide a community-wide, a metro-wide draw, moving that to a more central location, which is very much on the table and proposed for the Eighty-fourth and Frederick location, provides that accessibility for, within that being a much more central location with our community. You know, we've heard things about the condition of the current facility and, you know, just the inability to really kind of protect, project what that could like from a library branch. And again, to me, I think we have a facility that has a tremendous amount of potential to be something the community can be extremely proud of. The ability for the city to take a lead on things like historic preservation of a facility that is working through the process of federal designation, will take full advantage of federal tax credits, which is gonna help, you know, incentivize and finance and provide a tremendous asset for the overall improvement of the building, and that in turn is going to directly translate into the level of investment and program that we're able to pull out of the building itself as a downtown library branch. But, you know, I wanted to provide a few examples because the restoration of historic buildings is certainly not a new concept. We do have some fantastic newer examples, Burlington Station being, you know, one of the more larger current ones. I only bring these up because if anyone had been through these in the before and after of what these old, unutilized facilities look like prior to some of these projects, this is the Ashton Building in the up-and-coming Millwork Commons District. I bring that up because if you'd been through any of these facilities before they'd been renovated, they looked a heck of a lot like fourteen oh one Jones does now, and a lot of cases looked a heck of a lot worse. So the potential for what you can do with some of these old facilities, again, and take advantage of the federal incentives to do so, to help remove the bottom line for the developers and in turn the tenant, the city, it provides a tremendous potential to be a very cool and interesting downtown branch that I think can be a real destination for the community. Locating it directly to one of our community's largest tourist draws in the Old Market, I think, kind of expands... I think, kind of expands the opportunity to really showcase our community, our important community facilities, let alone being a extremely important local asset. Finally, the the level of accessibility, both by alternative modes of transit, ADA accessibility, as we get into our old historic neighborhoods, the brick streets has often been been brought up as a as a potential barrier to that. And yes, it does prove a challenge. It is one that I think is is fairly easily overcome. The the owner developer delivering the core and shell of the building will provide a tremendous opportunity to improve the onsite ADA compliance. I will make a note that the only street frontage that currently has those those brick streets is on the North Jones Street frontage, where to the immediate east, the 14th Street frontage, that is that is concrete pavement. And, you know, we don't necessarily have those issues on half of the frontage associated with the building. Out of that is going to come parking improvements, especially the immediate adjacent parking improvements. We'll work directly with Park Omaha to really maximize and optimize the parking access in and around the building. They have run some some quick numbers because it's something we've all heard, the availability of parking in comparison to Dale Clark. There are actually within two-block radius, 236 available on-street parking stalls of 1401 Jones within that two-block radius compared to 230 of the current W. Dale Clark site. So it compares extremely well, extremely favorable of how people can access those areas by car. And I'd argue, especially when we've got a fully developed Gene Lahey Mall, providing that opportunity in a little more neighborhood feel when you're not competing for parking stalls with the central business district and what we anticipate will be an extremely busy and activated park system. We really feel that the vehicle parking situation will be much improved, and patrons will see a lot of opportunity that comes with that. With the site itself comes a dedicated off-street surface stall, surface lot, which will be a great opportunity for our employees and for more longer-term parking within one block. You know, I'll be the the first to admit, pulling the accessibility off of orbit is a loss, that it complicated itself in the searching process because finding the availability of 30,000 square feet on that corridor because of its popularity and and the existing environmental conditions was extremely tough. But this area is, at 1401 Jones, it is served within a one-block walk of four different transit lines operated by Metro, and those are routes 11, 13, 36, and 95. And we will, just like working with Park Omaha to optimize access to the site, we will work with Metro to ensure we're optimizing those routings, the availability of stops to really help drive that opportunity, accessibility to the community. So once again, I just want to kind of reiterate that this is the start of a process and conversation by which these areas get developed, programmed, designed. We have asked the council to simultaneously consider a owner's representative that's going to help manage that process with direct engagement with stakeholders, with the library board of trustees, with library staff to help facilitate those conversations of what these locations can look like, how they're going to operate. At the end of the day, as I mentioned before, I think we'll have some system improvements this entire community can be proud of. So that being said, I will stick around for any questions of anything I I may have missed, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I promised Library Director Laura Marlane we would recognize her next by Zoom. If you can pull her up here. Sir, we do have the Library Director about to justify. We have the Library Director next, and then we'll call up further proponents.
I can't hear you.
You'll be next. We have the Library Director speaking by Zoom.
Okay.
Yep. Ms. Marlane, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. I'd like to talk about these two projects and my endorsement of them and to build on what Kevin said about the stars aligning. I've worked in libraries for over 30 years, and building projects do not come along often. This is an amazing opportunity for the library system to bring 21st century services into more modern buildings. And Kevin referred to some of the issues we have with main library, and those issues aren't going to go away. Our ability to deliver services here are, while we have been very successful, we are fighting against awkward workflows and constantly challenged by technology in a in a building that just does not cooperate with Wi-Fi. And these changes would really be remarkable for the library and allow us to continue to deliver services in the historic old market and provide access to our historic and genealogical collections at the 84th and Frederick Street site while at the same time having us plan for a newer facility and a bigger opportunity for the library.
Okay. Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Hello, I'm John Schmidt, 1940, South 49th. I'm a retired, I'm retired from the U.S. Postal Service where I was an architect engineer at their Kansas City and Minneapolis Field Real Estate and Buildings offices. I was also a founding member of Proud, People for Responsible Omaha Urban Development. We were the group that fought to save Jobbers Canyon, and instead of having possibly the largest and most dynamic warehouse conversion districts in the world, we got mostly Conagra grass. So I said that to tell you that I have I've been a lifelong proponent of historic preservation. But in this case, with the downtown library, I am in favor of its removal. I do have two two concerns, though. The the facility at the former ShopCo site, that has to be rented because that's going to be a temporary facility because those library functions will move to the new main library at 72nd and Dodge, hopefully, and which will also incorporate the Duespace. I think that this new main library in Omaha should be considered one of the most important buildings ever constructed in the history of Omaha. And I would propose that the city conduct an international worldwide architectural design competition for that building. Now, getting back to the other facility that's proposed in downtown as a branch facility, the only concern I have about that is that I think the city of Omaha should consider, do we want that as our permanent site? And if we do, then why are we going to spend literally into the millions of taxpayer dollars renting it? Why not just buy it now? The other, the other reason why I'm in favor of the removal of the Clark Library is because that square block at the head of the Lahey Mall is the most visible, the most desirable, and the most valuable square block in the state of Nebraska, if not most of the Midwest. And my concern about that is I want the city of Omaha to negotiate a price for that lot, that block, incorporating all that is so valuable about that block. And as far as I know, nothing has been discussed about what the city is going to sell that block for. But that block is so valuable that it would probably make a company like Mutual of Omaha want to construct a skyscraper 50 stories tall on that block. So let's get the amount of money that's due us for that site. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Kennedy, and I live at 15809 Douglas Circle, and I currently serve as President of the Library Board of Trustees of Omaha. I want to thank the council for all the support you've given the library over the years, and we appreciate you approving our funding and also approving our board members. We represent a bipartisan group of people that's very diverse from all parts of Omaha that's entrusted with being the trustees of the library and its collections. We took the time to review the Facilities Update in 2010 and also the update, which I also was present for back in 2017, of what our library needs are. There are three main things that need to be done for the library. One is the downtown branch, the new main, and the Millard Library, the farther one out west. Two of these can be accomplished today with these leases are set up in motion. The library took its time to take a look at the site the city found for us. I want to thank Kevin and Troy Anderson for all the work that they've done in the mayor's office to find the space. We have been looking for years for space to the downtown. At one time, we did look at the Civic Auditorium space. The board felt that that space was too far from patrons and not close to the residential area. One of the considerations taken account is this is no longer going to be the main branch. I know there's concerns about ORPT being part of it and bus service and all that, but remember, you're not going to have people coming from all over the city going to a neighborhood branch. That would be for the new main, which is proposed in the 72nd and Dodge to 90th and Dodge corridor that's been discussed with the council and the rest of the community and the project with Heritage. A new downtown branch needs to have 30,000 square feet. It needs to be close to where the former library is at. It needs to have access to transportation for the downtown area, and it needs to have space that's flexible for a great design. That space is 14th and Jones. I've had the chance with several library board members to go through it. I've also asked our library staff to go through it. I trust Laura Marlane and her staff to make professional decisions. We're a board of trustees, like the city council. We come from different backgrounds, but we ask for the professionals for opinions. Laura supports this, so does her team. I also support the fact that they know that they can take care of the collections and move them in a safe and proper manner. So it's important that we get the other contracts associated with this, if you approve this today, to be passed soon so we can work on the design and work with the builder's rep on that. I think the downtown branch is going to be great because I've had a chance to go through it, see what can be done with it. We have two floors, a blank canvas, that I think we can make one of our top branches in the city. In fact, we've talked about through our building committee is maybe that having a motif of the arts and culture to match the downtown, which our downtown is known for. I think that's a great idea, and we're going to bring in through this process, and you hear from other people about this, that we will get community input on what that's going to look like. But I think we're going to have meeting space. It's a full-service branch. It's going to have top technology. We'll partner with other representatives to work on that, and I think it will be the best for the city. I really believe that this is in the best interest of the city, and our board approved it unanimously except for we had one abstention. You just appointed Cameron Gales. He just got on the board recently, and he didn't feel comfortable because he didn't have the information. Some people say that this process was rushed. Our board considered this over two board meetings and actually delayed our vote on the leases for another meeting to be able to have the chance to go through so we can dot our i's and cross our t's and ask the city important questions, and the city was able to answer them. With that, our board supports this. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, city staff, I'm Jay Noddle, Noddle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. I'm here today as a member of our community and the Chair of the Urban Core Committee, recognizing and realizing there's a potential we could be, our company could be selected, well, we've been selected, could be approved, as the owner's representative for the city to manage this process that you've been hearing about, but that's for another time. I just want to say, number one, I'm here to answer any questions that I can answer. But more importantly, maybe, our downtown has, and the core of our city has tremendous potential. And President Kennedy is right, and the others that have spoken are right. We need a great downtown branch. It's really important for the for the community, for those that are library users today, and for others that may become library users in the future. That's that's a great library branch downtown is an essential ingredient for a lively urban core. As it relates to the two buildings, they can become whatever the library board, the library staff, the community, and the city want them to become. The process is just beginning, and I think it can be terrific. I think it will be terrific. And whether Noddle Companies is selected as the city's owner's representative or not, we are fully in support of this and encourage you to approve these leases today so the process can begin. I'll stick around and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
My name is Douglas Grandielli, represent myself, 3119 North 47th Avenue. I just want to say the first speaker was wrong. The Willa Cather Branch as a library is larger than the Sorensen. I know this because I know every library in town because I love libraries. I spent six hours at the library last week at Millard and Benson. The W. Dale Clark Library broke my heart. I can't tell you how much it broke my heart. I loved the old library. I remember sitting in the old library, reading. It was quiet. It was a place where you could meditate and study. A library is a university. It is, to me, to me, it's a place that is my heart. It is a place I learned about all sorts of things I have never learned. It is a place where you almost have a worship of the knowledge that is there. And the old library had that. The new library, the W. Dale Clark Library, when they built it, it was awful. It has a huge area in the middle that goes from the bottom to the top. It brings silence from the bottom of the building all the way to the top of the building. It's almost impossible to find a quiet spot. The way they arranged the shelves and then had the tables around that, it felt cold and barren like a warehouse, not like a place where you could study to think. This was a place where you felt ushered out of. The last time I was in the Clark Library, which I have not gone to for a while because recently it's become decrepit, it has been allowed to go downhill. It's becoming worse. But the last time I went there, I actually asked the librarian where I might find a place of silence, and he said that, well, maybe you can go hide in the genealogy room. No one likes to go there. It is an atrocity. Almost anything would be better than the Clark Library. The Council of Love's library would be a good example. If anyone wants to see what halfway decent library looks like in this area, it's beautiful. Omaha should have a much better library downtown than the Clark Library. It is cold, forbidding, and and then it's actually too small for the administrative offices. They had to turn the third floor, which had been bizarrely, I know, the 180, 900 Dewey Decimal Systems, into administrative offices because they didn't have enough room for administrative offices. I guess that's all I have to say. I just feel very strong, and I'm looking forward to a new library because I want something different for myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Good afternoon. I'm Holly Barrett, 1403 Farnham Street, number 802. I'm speaking today as the Executive Director of the Omaha Downtown Improvement District and also as a resident living within blocks of both the old and the proposed new site for the downtown public library branch. I'm speaking as a proponent for the lease agreement on the chosen new sites, and I'd like to say that as a resident living across the street, I see how dilapidated the current building has become and how few people other than staff are truly going in on a daily basis. I literally have a trunk, a chunk of the exterior on my desk that I picked up from a walk with my dog around the the building. It is an atrocity, and and it's it's high time that we do something to fix it. I am also speaking as a downtown community advocate. My organization recognizes that this opportunity to relocate the Dale Clark branch could be monumental for our downtown neighborhood. The historic building being considered and the surrounding area are ripe for further revitalization, and we welcome the efforts as part of the larger energy currently sparking on overall urban on overall urban core improvements. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? We have two opponents by Zoom, too, which I'll get to after our audience.
Hello, my name is Pete Fay. My address is 418 South 38th Avenue, apartment 22, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. Although I am sure that other people will talk about why the mayor's plan for the library makes no financial sense, or how the move will harm the library's invaluable archival and genealogical materials, or how destroying a magnificent example of brutalist architecture would be a blow to the city's architectural diversity, or how laughably insulting it is to house library administration in a failed Big Box store, or even how this really is all just a plan to kick the unhoused out of the downtown area so that rich people no longer have to see them and thus be reminded of the sins of their wealth. I want to focus my comments on something the mayor said when introducing this plan way back in the fall, that because the library sits on valuable land, it must be sold. Because it is in this comment that I think we really see the nihilism and profanity inherent in both this plan and the worldview that supports it. For indeed, I agree with the mayor, the land is valuable, which is precisely why there should be a library on it. Jean Lahey Mall will be finished this summer, and it is difficult to think of a better way to utilize valuable public land adjacent to a brand-new, world-class public park than with a public library. Storytime with grandma, then an afternoon in the park, throwing the frisbee with a friend, then a relaxing couple hours in the stacks, reading whatever you want to read, wherever your imagination takes you, studying for a test, then taking a brain break in the park for a walk, enjoying the sights and sounds of the city. The possibilities are endless. They are the things that we want to do as humans that make life worth living. But in Omaha, apparently, we are not interested in living. We are only interested in the artificial sense of pleasure and fulfillment brought about by money and its attendant developments. Instead of using public space in a way that benefits the public, we sell public space for the benefit of a few white men so they can build their tower to Mammon, their phallic monuments to their own self-importance. Memorial Park doubtlessly sits on valuable land. Why not bulldoze that so we can build Dilig Point, too? Why not cement over Standing Bear Lake to make way for a few more Casey's gas stations? Finally, once we've sold off all the city land to developers and you can't move an inch without paying someone for something, maybe the city can mint some NFTs, rare singular pictures of Rosenblatt, or Jobber's Canyon, or W. Dale Clark Library, tokens through which we can remember what we once had, what was taken from us by developers and corporations and businessmen who can never have enough. You can see that the people are against this. Indeed, unless one of your constituents happens to be Scrooge McDuck, I doubt you have received a single letter in support of this plan. I implore you to vote this down. I implore you to reject the nihilism that says we don't deserve our library across from our park, that we don't deserve something valuable.
Thank you. Next opponent, please. Don't be shy. Come on down to the front, please, and please line up if you would so we can kind of be
Good afternoon. Mark Brandon, 6915 Evans Street. I'm here to represent myself. I know there's a lot of us here to speak. I just, I think none of us wanted to get up and speak after that excellent presentation. I wasn't intending on being here today. I just got off work, but luckily you guys were still still in session, so I thought I'd come down here. I do think it's very funny that the gentleman who who lamented the old library, and some of you might have been thinking, well, isn't the Jean Lahey the old library? Well, no, the old main library is across the street from this building. It's the one of the most beautiful buildings in downtown Omaha, one of the most excellent examples of neoclassical architecture in all of the Midwest and all the nation. It's the it's the building that has all the famous philosophers and authors, the bust on top of the building, right? That was a fantastic building, and I agree with that opponent, but...
Opponent.
Opponent, excuse me.
All right, just speak to us. He was a proponent.
Well, excuse me. I agree with him, but for reference, that was the exact same, what he said about the decrepit building and how W. Dale Clark doesn't function, that was, those are the exact same excuses that were given to vacate that building at that time, that building that's right around 30,000 square feet and onto bus lines. I guess hindsight's 2020. Mr. Kennedy mentioned that the facilities master plan of 2010 and 2017 were were both the impetus for getting this project rolling, the reason for moving, right? But as he mentioned, there were, well, in fact, there were more than three priorities mentioned in that, in the 2017 facilities master plan. And as I read it, the W. Dale Clark Library addressing that was not the highest priority. Because, yeah, sure, it's in bad shape. Sure, it's got a big hole in the middle, and it's not very functional, and the Wi-Fi doesn't work very well, but is it the least functioning of our libraries? No, it's not. Which one, which one is worse than that? The 13th Library, right? There aren't even books there. There is no Wi-Fi. There are no children. There are no walls. There's no parking lot. There is nothing because it doesn't exist. It's in your district, Mr. Rowe, and so personally, and I implore you, how can that not be a higher priority to deliver a library to your constituents? Zero of your constituents have a home library. That issue then goes on to impact, yes, it does. Yeah, that's correct, Ms. Milton. That goes on to impact your constituents and Mr. Harding's constituent, yeah, that's correct, Mr. Harding's constituents, because all of Mr. Rowe's constituents, if if they want to get a book, where do they have to go? The library where your constituents visit, and so that becomes more crowded, and the service level goes down, and the stress on the staff goes up. And so that is a problem that needs solved immediately. It wasn't the 2019 CIP approved by this body. There was even a location identified, an attentive agreement with Millard Public Schools for a location, but that was put on hold, and I want to know why. I live nowhere near it, but I do worry about those poor children in southwest Omaha that have nothing to read. And as far as the timing with the stars being aligned, what's the problem if the park opens in May and we don't have a plan for that site? I don't see the risk in it. He said that, excuse me, it was Mr. Anderson, who who said that that was, the park opening in May, he says it's imperative that there be a plan, imperative that there be a plan before opening. Well, that's not true. It's just a false narrative. We can find out after the park opens. No one is going to be celebrating the opening of the park and then say, well, wait, what are we going to do over there? I can't come to this park anymore. Doesn't make sense. Directly east, Mr. Peralaro, you mentioned that you you did look for other potential sites closer to the orbit line. And I forget who said it, but I think Mr. Mr. Kennedy said it is a huge loss that the that the library is moving off the orbit line. Well, W. Dale Clark directly east of that, there is a city-owned lot that is not part of the park. Okay, it's a staging ground right now. Well, what do we do? Has anybody asked, has anybody inquired, what are we going to do with that lot? Are we going to demolish the library, sell that lot for development, and then also sell that additional lot on the on the east side adjoining the park? Or what? Why don't we just wait until the park's done and then build the 30,000 square feet library right there and then demolish the library and sell it so we can make money and improve library services, right? There's no loss of services. We can build, it's just a joke. It's just a joke. I'm going to let everybody else, everything else I have to say is will be hashed out by every, but it's just, it is, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other opponents?
My name is Eric Oberg. I'm at 6319 North 36th Avenue, 68111. This vote was postponed rightly citing the need for more info with too many unanswered questions before irrevocably committing the library to a path planned largely without meaningfully involving the library or the public. But the mayor's office trying to rush this through has still declined to provide further new details. What we do know are two main things. First, the very data being cited to justify this project explicitly states a greater priority to meet the need for a new southwest library and a clear public mandate to prioritize that rather than replacing the downtown library. Second, this project will spend away vast sums of funding to meet new needs for a downtown library already being met since we already have one. As some would understandably argue, the current building is not perfect, but 1401 Jones is worse. W. Dale Clark is a 122,490-square-foot building. 1401 Jones is 42,000 in total, and even then, the library doesn't even get more than three-fourths of that. The canned response from the mayor's office imperated by the mayor's board appointees is that with the ShopCo, the combined square footage will be nearly the same as W. Dale Clark, and that they technically meet the recommendations from the 2017 facilities master plan. But if a library opens there, staff will immediately be overwhelmed with patrons asking why there aren't enough tables, computers, chairs, enough space where there always had been space. You think library staff against us wouldn't love to work in a freshly renovated space with new HVAC and the latest tech and that we're just too sentimental to go over an old building? W. Dale Clark is uniquely capable of providing a space that gives the most vulnerable of our city space where they're safe, sheltered, and with the unique dignity and, right now, vital safety of not being crowded. At the last board meeting, the board went through the motions of allowing the public to unanimously plead against these leases, and then the board proceeded to ignore them and to make condescending remarks toward them. The closest thing to a coherent, practical justification they gave for the vote was that 1401 Jones is supposedly the best vacant location based on the 2017 recommendation. And if we don't buy in the library, it's wasting millions on leasing now, well, then we might not ever get a chance to. This tells me either they know this isn't what the public wants or best for the library, and this was the best excuse they had, or they have been so irresponsible as to be duped into panic buying by the oldest scamming trick in the book. Act fast, buy now, offer may not last. Anyone who knows the history of this location knows how ridiculous that excuse is. That said, they have a point. There aren't many spaces downtown perfect for a library, if only there was a piece of land the size of a whole block not currently being used for non-library purposes. Even better, if the city already owned it. Here's an idea. If the mayor thinks W. Dale Clark is that bad and wants it demolished, do it. Then take all those millions that were going to be wasted on exorbitant rent and instead build a new library there better than ever. Why haven't ideas like that been allowed a seat at the table? They could even lease a location during construction. That way, everyone's happy. The landlords get their precious profit from taxpayer dollars. Library staff get the best facility to adequately serve the public. The public gets to keep their desired location, and the mayor and her developer pals can take credit. The only reason I can think of why that wouldn't make everyone happy is if what Omaha overwhelmingly wants and what's best for the library aren't the actual motives of these plans, which would explain why the library largely has not had much of a say until after the big decisions are already made for and dictated down to them. To kind of touch on what I'm sure will be in a rebuttal, I know that there's talk that the southwest branch hasn't quite had a perfect location or the funds found for it, but that excuse falls apart given how long it's been compared with the extraordinary speed, energy, funding, and determination being suddenly demanded toward these proposed lease locations. Second, this project intends to waste millions of dollars renting a temporary solution for needs already being met for a central location. As W. Dale Clark already provides a logistical center for administrative and collections needs, similarly, as far as geographic centrality, I can't imagine how we could possibly have a more central location than the Swanson branch. I doubt the families who love having Swanson as their neighbor will be, will buy the logic of closing it so we can have a replacement further away, closer to already existing libraries, and in a hyper-congested intersection surrounded by strip malls but not a single actual home, whether it's Do Space or the ShopCo. But then if Swanson wouldn't be closed, why do we need another library so close? Right now, the closest branches in the system are still three miles apart to keep services spread nicely. ShopCo, on the other hand, is closer to Swanson than that, and Do Space is under two miles away. Also, how many homeowners in the room see the sense in selling off for Peanuts, your prime real estate home you already own, to go pay rent in a rundown strip mall? Why is W. Dale Clark expected to sell for no more than $4 million, as far as I'm aware anyway? How does anyone benefit from the library becoming beholden to profit-driven landlords? As acknowledged, the existing locations are not perfect, but addressing their imperfections and finding new solutions should not be arbitrarily forced to the forefront and take precedence over more immediate needs currently not being met at all, nor for that matter should they be inexplicably rushed and given unpopular privately profiting solutions in second-rate locations regardless of whether greater needs have or haven't already been met, nor should they take the form of shady land grabs. If I were a corporate oligarch wanting to get my hands on an enviable piece of land but currently owned and occupied by a beloved public institution, I would probably make sure I'm cozy with the local government by, say, donating to the campaigns of potential political allies who could in turn make sure I get the land for a song. It would also be nice if there were some sort of elite organization of my wealthy peers making big shows of philanthropy to amass and wield tremendous socio-political influence, which could be used to pressure local officials to move the current occupants elsewhere. Even better, if I could be a board member for this group. They could then make big promises about some...
Are you summarizing tonight? Thank you.
Yes. I could just skip all the rest of it, and I'd just say, be good to Google. Let's see, David Slossberg Stothard Donations and David Slossberg Spruce Capital Group and David Slossberg Heritage Services Board and Spruce Capital Group Downtown Library Proposal. The Lund Company is also a big donor to Mayor Stothard. If we're eventually going to have a new central location, whether it's at 72nd or anywhere else, then let's not throw away millions of dollars leasing a derelict ShopCo as an interim location and then put that money toward whatever new location ends up being built and/or improving the existing central locations in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
I need to take a breath. That was a lot. My name is Molly Romero, 5101 Nicholas, and I sent a letter, I don't know about three pages, with an attached letter to each one of you, and I hope you had a chance to look at it. I do have, it's all 16-point font, so it shouldn't take me long. It's only one page. But, you know, primarily, you know, these are not permanent solutions, and, you know, the, having the Dale Clark Library jump ahead of all of the other recommendations that have been made for a total plan is not explained, you know, by what what's driving that timeline. But I do have concerns just about the ShopCo location. One is that it's a commitment for 10 years with no renewals, with special perils insurance coverage, which means flood plain, and, you know, why would we rent a big space for 10 years that might have flood problems, especially with weather being such an unpredictable thing nowadays? With the Jones Street lease, it's 10 years plus two 10-year renewals, so a total of potentially 30 years with an option to buy it five years. But to buy it in five years, it's for fair market value, and plus, we had, we would have to pay as a city five years of unamortized tenant improvements. So all of the tenant improvements that are talked about that are going to be shared with White Lotus, you know, we'd have to pay half of that if we were to buy the building. So it's not all being shared with White Lotus. Plus, we'd have to pay nine months' rent. The representation that we tried to keep the library as close as possible to the existing, well, I would like to say we can keep it where it is and not have the same building, and this has been done in Kansas City. The city negotiated with the developer to build a large building and house the city library in the first two ground floors with, you know, pride of place at street level. And so we can have the library right there by the Eugene Lahey Mall, but we just have to negotiate to do that. So it seems to mean that we should have a plan for what we're going to do totally before we start tearing things down for any artificial deadline. So if we were to plan to work with a developer, we could incorporate a new library in the building, then find temporary accommodations just for the duration of construction and move the library back in. So I guess that's my main point, where we don't have a plan for the for the whole thing. We just have a, let's take action before we have a plan, which seems very backwards to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
Thank you. Rick Fulton, 410 South 82nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. I would agree with some of the opponents of this plan that there's really no reason to split up our main library, send our important genealogy stuff to a ShopCo that no one wants to occupy right now, and an old warehouse... to occupy right now, and an old warehouse on 14th and Jones, which would take millions of dollars to renovate and then rent. So I ask myself, what is driving this process? What's the rush? Why are we doing this? And, of course, you and everyone in this building knows, and it's been mentioned, and it's no secret that Heritage Services wants to build its own special library at 72nd Dodge on the Dew Space where they already own land. And I think the whole process has shown, the mayor and some city councilmen have shown a lot of disrespect towards the public, putting the interests of developers, Mecca people, Heritage Services people above what the public wants. Look around. Hardly anybody is in favor of this plan except those that would profit from it. And we've seen Heritage Services playbook before of giving some money in exchange for total control and handing out their contracts of city money to the same people over and over again. And what I want to implore some of the city councilmen that previously voted for this plan is to remember that you represent not just Mecca people who already give away our parks and our baseball stadium, now you want to give them our library. And I think you should put the interests of the public ahead of those that wish to profit. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
Harry, you're at 1626 Locum. I'd like to agree with the opponents concerning the library. I think the library should be a place that's centrally located, particularly in the city, that's accessible, not only to the affluent and those that are more prone for gentrification throughout the city, or those that have money and have funds and worryabouts to get to here and there, but oftentimes, the more indigent, indigenous people within the communities from north, south, and other parts of the city are not accessible. They don't have the same access. And I hope that this plan is not devised for the purposes of hiding and obscuring the presence of some of those indigenous and perhaps poorer people in the community who have access only by bus lines and other public transportation to get to and fro. One of the things that disturbed me about this plan from what I've read and heard thus far is the fact that the city, again, would be leasing property before it's renovated. And I'm not sure of all the conditions of the present library that the Clark Library, but if there's a need of renovation for other purposes or reconstruction and redevelopment of a new library, that's also a potential. But to spend $465,000 a year to lease a land and then subsequently renovate it and perhaps then thereafter buy that same property, it seems like a waste of taxpayers' money. So I behoove the city council, I think that the city council should look at and study a little bit more in terms of whether the development and lease of another library at the 14th and Jones location would actually benefit the entirety of the city of Omaha as opposed to those developers and proponents that want to augment oftentimes their economic positions. So that's essentially what I like to say. And particularly with the advent of the new park that's being renovated, that question raises again a question as to whether or not the city wants to hide and obscure those indigenous oftentimes that come to the library, not only for refuge but for education and understanding. A library should be accessible to all the people. The Charles Washington Library in North Omaha is in need of some renovation and other branch libraries throughout the city. I think the city could do well by looking at and studying this issue a little bit further before it makes a determination on using funds to lease, renovate, and then thereafter purchase another library building. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
Dewan Lamont Hayes, 5835 Corby Street. I'm going to start with some history. I brought The Gate City: A History of Omaha. I highly recommend it. Upon its founding, Omaha was never a pastoral village or mining camp. It was a speculation and communications point, helped at its inception by corrupt politics. In 1857, a group of businessmen and lawyers founded the Omaha Library Association. Motives varied, but they included the education of future generations, the desire to promote adult education, the wish to copy eastern practices of the coast, and planned to sell Omaha as a cultural center. Within short order, the Omaha Association decided to hold a lecture series, a widely-used device in other parts of the country to cultivate the arts. There was no way to obtain top talent from the coasts. Instead, the Omaha Association relied on area residents. Speakers gave formal talks on our constitution and laws, progress, immigration, free thought, and labor. While lecturers were admonished to avoid religion and politics, Amelia Blumer, a Councilwoman feminist, gave a controversial presentation claiming women were intellectual equals to men. Be that as it may, a few Omahans saw the value of bringing intellectual pursuits to the village. Their contribution loomed in large, creating a community. Without articulating a viewpoint, they realized there was more to forming a city than protecting property and taking a harsh position on law and order. The people are what make this city. We look out for each other. Through the struggle and absurdity, we support one another. Yet, the city's administration knows not our community. Landlords, developers, corporate stakeholders receive favor. They have the money, so they make the decisions. It seems to matter not that people are freezing to death on the street, or being killed by cars, or displaced from their homes, or losing the one place that is free, warm, and informative in downtown Omaha. Everything is about projecting an image. No matter how truly dire our situation, when the city was pummeled by a windstorm and thousands lost power, our leader, Wes O'Donnell Goff, came and said, quote, "Omaha looked good on TV." This city, from its inception, was built on violence. Violence enacted on anyone trying to change it, to exorcise it of its greedy demons, to make it an equitable and loving place supportive of all of its people. Malcolm X and his family were driven out by the KKK. Will Brown and George Smith publicly lynch for existing while black. Zachary Bear heals and numerous indigenous people killed for being on their ancestral lands.
Can I encourage you to speak to the libraries?
Yes, I'm getting to my point. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The city of Omaha is built on sacred land whose spirit is ignored, contorted, tortured for profit, plaques, and ribbon cuttings. It is time we, the people of this city, reconnect with our native family and summon the grave spirit to heal us. Omaha, Omaha means the people who move against the current, and we can navigate the treacherous waters when we listen and move together. We are making our presence known, so pay attention. This week, the city announced Speeding Awareness Week, stating speeding, both casual and excessive results in serious losses of time, money, but most importantly, human life. I suggest you take your own advice. Stop. Slow down. Listen to what we are saying. Do not pass these leases. Expand community engagement and create a course of action that favors and includes the people you supposedly represent. I will conclude with, the world is changing right before our eyes. If we think that making decisions on real estate and development and construction is going to keep going as it is and we can count on things being how we've always done them, you're sadly mistaken. And I advise you, take the time to pay attention to what the future generations of the city actually want before making any decision that is going to impact us. Nothing about us without us.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
If I give this to you, this handout's for everybody. My name is Scott Blake, 2316 North 52nd Street. The handout is, if I can put it on the projector. There we go. This was actually given to me by someone at the Papio NRD, Mr. Councilmember Begley. This shows the flood plain of the 84th Street ShopCo location. This is using FEMA's National Flood Hazard Layer Viewer. The location is in a flood plain. It's technically a one-in-500-year flood zone, and with a 10-year lease, that equals a 2% chance of flood. It is 370 feet from the Big Papillion Creek. And someone else mentioned earlier about climate change. This map is not adjusted for climate change, so I would say those numbers are going to be going up. As comparison, there's the WDL Clark, and you can see, it is not in a flood plain. Specifically, it is called an area of minimal flood hazard. So we're going to go from this, are we going from this flood-free zone? Look at all that color and all that rainbow, how beautiful. I also, I spoke with a flood management expert. They said that this is not a mandatory insurance purchase zone, but they highly recommended it specifically for an archival collection. I'm not sure if that's what the peril, special peril insurance is, but regardless, some of the items in the collection are irreplaceable. So let's say a flood happens and we lose some items, I guess we'll get an insurance payout, so at least we'll make some money on a catastrophe. Another reason, or possible reason for the insurance is there's asbestos in the floor and ceiling at the ShopCo location. And then, oof. Earlier, I forget who it was, but someone spoke about reduced transit or transit options. I spent the day earlier, you know, I love making maps, Councilmember Harding. So this map shows that there are 17 bus routes that pass all, right next to the Dale Clark, not a block away, which, ugh. So compare that to, there's the ShopCo location. You get one bus route. I'll repeat, we're going from 17 bus routes at the WDL Clark to one at the 84th Street location. And this is where we're going to be moving the most popular genealogy section. And then, oh man, so, someone spoke earlier about the Jones Street location is one block from four transit lines. That's one block? I would say that's one and a half blocks. So not quite a misstatement, but, again, so this is the Jones Street. You're going to go from 17 bus routes, including the Orbit, to four within a block. And then also, I looked to see if there's any Heartland B cycle. The closest one to the ShopCo is two miles. That's only a 45-minute walk, so not a complete whatever. And then, I kept hearing, or I couldn't find it, but somewhere I heard that the age of the building was an issue. I've heard that it was outdated. I'm sorry, the Dale Clark is outdated. It doesn't even make sense, but, so the Dale Clark was built in 1976, it's 46 years old. ShopCo, 1974, two years older. 1401 Jones, built in 1912, 110 years ago. How can we call Dale Clark outdated and old and not a 110-year-old building? Makes no sense. And then, I've been trying to find, where does the money go when the building is sold? I haven't got an answer. I heard that it goes back to the state. That seems problematic. Someone else said that the Civic Center is four, I'm sorry, the Civic Center was too far away from downtown. It's four blocks north of the Orbit line, or four blocks north of where the Dale Clark is. Jones Street is also four blocks south, so that makes no sense. And then, moving the collection is extremely problematic. Remember, irreplaceable collection, and you want it to be really hard to move. This is going to be a waste of time. And now, we're going to be moving it twice? Double the waste of time. And then, going back to the Dale Clark, I heard it called it's the most valuable piece of land, or one of the most valuable pieces of land in Omaha. It's also extremely blighted and substandard. I can't put these two together, like, it's either most valuable or extremely blighted and substandard. Which is it? So just to recap, moving to ShopCo is going to increase the flood risk, which is going to increase insurance costs. We're going to increase asbestos risk, increase the age of building, increase money spent on rent, and also reduce the hours, reduce programming, reduce transit, reduce access, and ignore the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Sarah Johnson, 2316 North 52nd. I live with Scott Blake, and we've talked about this, as you can tell, maybe too much, but I also wish that y'all would talk as much about it as I feel like a lot of the other folks in the room have been. We hear a lot about timeline, and that's a big concern for me. We heard from Mike Kennedy, who had to go somewhere, I guess, because I think he left, that they used two whole board meetings to discuss these leases. Are you kidding me? Like, did y'all hear that too? So much of this feels like just, all of our hearts are beating and all of our voices are catching because we are pissed off because it does not seem like y'all are listening. And you ask for public engagement, and you say, yes, we're going to care about what you say. Show up, tell us. Go to the library board meetings. People showed up at the library board meetings. Some of you did, not all of you did, but the people that were there were also asking for this project to slow down. I love Dewan's mention of the speeding awareness. Y'all are speeding through this, and it's going to cause some sort of a crash. It's not going to go well. It's already not going well. I, you know, also have a map. I think he pretty much did a good job of this, but sometimes it's just really helpful to see colorful maps. Okay, star number one, that's our existing library that is clearly well-served. I'm not speaking on behalf of Mochip, by the way. I'm speaking on behalf of Sarah Johnson. But, Mochip feels pretty strongly about accessibility via transit, and you cannot argue that that's a great spot for a public asset. This, on the other hand, is not one block away, which I heard you say, and I hope maybe you misspoke, but that's not one block away from four lines. I would also like to talk to you a little bit about walking, since apparently it's not that big of a deal if we have to walk from, you know, bus stops to libraries. Omaha doesn't care about pedestrians so much. So I think that, like, again, it feels pretty futile to be up here trying to talk to y'all about this because it seems like it's already a done deal. I do have one other photo, though, since we're talking about accessibility so much, which I'm glad that, you know, you're saying the words, but you've been there, you know what it looks like. The fact that we're going to supposedly get this whipped around in record time and make sure that all of this is going to be accessible in, like, a matter of months is a joke. There is a piece of concrete that's on Dodge Street by an Orbit, whatever, it doesn't matter. It's been broken for three years. So you're going to fix these sidewalks in a matter of months? That'll be great. This is something that I wanted to show you that you cannot fix. Part of the thing that's cool about this district, this up-and-coming district, which is also somehow simultaneously not that well-used, so parking won't be a problem. This is not focusing, but I wish it would because what you can't change is all of the loading docks on all of the surrounding buildings. So maybe you can do what you can do to that building at 1401 Jones, but you can't recreate So maybe you can do what you can do to that building at 1401 Jones, but you can't recreate the sidewalks. Oh my God, my dad's texting me, of course. You get the point, Dad. You're not watching, maybe you are hilarious. I do get my sense of humor from him. None of this matters, y'all are going to do what you're going to do, but I do think that, if nothing else, I want to say, I hear you, public, and I hope that we have public servants that will listen to us as well. Thank you, vote no.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Hello, my name is Noemi Gilbert. I reside at 530 South 51st Avenue. I'm a Central High School student, just a couple blocks away from W. Dale Clark, and I'm speaking in opposition to 92 and 93. I'm asking for these library decisions to be made with the needs of the people of Omaha in mind, and not the needs of our real estate companies. The W. Dale Clark Library serves as a cultural core of downtown Omaha. It provides valuable resources like internet access, literature, research assistance from librarians, irreplaceable local history documents, perhaps most important of all, a safe, warm, public indoor space for downtown Omaha that's easily accessible by Orbit and other metro buses. In the midst of a bunch of office buildings, it's a, sorry, it's a breath of fresh air to have a space of public knowledge. I urge you to consider investing in renovating our downtown library that we already own, making it the beautiful space that it absolutely can be, instead of leasing these two new buildings. I have several questions. How long will the downtown area be without library service? What's the timeline for this? Will the city be able to ensure that the resources that W. Dale Clark provides remains accessible throughout the demolition and construction process? Why, after investing millions of dollars into Orbit Transit, is the downtown library being moved further away from an Orbit stop? Is the demolition of one building and the design and construction of two new buildings, or the leasing of two new buildings, a more financially secure decision than the renovation of a current, or a single currently existing building? How is the city going to ensure that public input is heard and taking it, taken into account throughout this process? During the library public strategic planning forums this fall, you heard time and time again that what the community wants and needs is a loved W. Dale Clark library. I'm going to read a few responses to a tweet that was made a few days ago by the Lund Company that was asking what people wanted to see at the W. Dale Clark facility. Over 600 people responded to this tweet with what they want to see at this location. A library, the W. Dale Clark Library. Are you serious? A library, a library, a beautiful library, an accessible public library, a library, a library, obviously, a glorious public library, an effing library. Our libraries need to serve our people. I ask you to reconsider the leasing of 1401 Jones and the Shopko location, and listen to the library patrons, as we say that the W. Dale Clark branch is a valuable and irreplaceable part of downtown Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please. And just so we know, how many more folks are speaking on, as opponents?
Good evening, I guess, and now evening. My name is Edwin Schroeder. I reside at 621 South 15th Street, so right around the corner from the Jones Library, or future, potential Jones Library. I recently moved there with my wife. We relocated from Connecticut. She is now teaching at University of Nebraska Omaha, and I happen to be retired. I retired after 30 years as a librarian at Yale University, and directed their rare book and special collections library for the last 10 years. After we moved in the fall, started using the library, reusing it regularly, have had the opportunity to have a tour of the special collections, saw some amazing collections, amazing material with lots of potential use. And one of the challenges was both space, but also staffing, and how to have enough staff to do the work they need to do. And that's part of the question that I have. We keep being focused totally on facility, we're not thinking about the library as a whole. The second point I want to make is, when I arrived and we started reading the newspapers, et cetera, you started hearing about a plan and renovation possibilities, and it was difficult to figure out what was going on. It was an opaque, at best, process, and in fact, the only reason we found out more is people started agitating and wondering what was going on. And it's been a slog to figure that out. I think it's, it was here, your previous meeting, there were comments made by various members of the council about what was happening. And it is fascinating to me that this has been such a surprise. If there had been discussions from 2010 and 2017, you would have thought that this was a more public process, and that was not, clearly not the case. The timeline is very strange. It has been a project that has been desired since 2017. Why, what are we now? Almost five years, we now decided that it's urgent to do this. It's also interesting, because as part of their agitation, or if you will, in the fall, there was an attempt to gather, or a process to gather, public feedback and ideas about the library. And that was gathered up, there were multiple sessions held around the city. Also, people sent in comments, et cetera. There has not been any strategic plan, draft version presented before a decision is made. At the last board meeting, it was said that that draft should be available in March. That's several months after we are making a major commitments to make changes. I would suggest that their timeline, there's a disconnect there. I would also point out that normally, when you think about a facility, you have to have a plan, a strategic plan placed first. To do your facility and then say we're going to do a strategic plan doesn't make any sense. You need to know what your program is going to be, and then you think about how, what building space you're going to need. I find the disconnect troubling, and even if the decision was made that we want to move someplace else, you want to know what your program is. What are you committing as a board in terms of costs? Your program could come around and say, we want to do X, Y, and Z. We want to offer, instead of, we want to do airplane flights, we want to teach people how to fly planes. Well, where is that going to be? You're going to need a different space. So normally, you would expect to have a plan in place before you develop your facility. The second piece is that it's clear that there's, then if there's a longer-term plan that has, that's been part of the opaque process. If this is a staging or a swing plan, then say it's a swing plan. That's never been clear. And in fact, if you propose, and I think related to this, is that the two spaces that you've looked at or are potentially approving have been on the market for multiple years. It's not like they've magically shown up. These are not new spaces, as far as I'm aware. And in fact, if you go to the White Lotus site they talked about in 2019, it was going to be a great place for a nonprofit. They had some really wonderful ideas about how they might use that space. So it's been around, and it hasn't been called for. The other thing I would highlight, special collections gets tied in time and time again. Moving books and books, it's not just books, you have periodicals, you have photographs, you have material that can't be replaced. There is a, there are movers, there are people who can help you with this, but it's more than a six-month process, a seven-month process. You don't even have a design yet, and you're still talking about ready to move and get out the door by September. There's just, the timeline piece, just, you're going, as Simone said earlier, decision, bad decisions are potentially going to be there. I would highlight, in the meeting, they talked about a woman named, a firm named Margaret Sullivan, this is at the last board meeting, who's an architect and designer. And it was really interesting, looking at her website, I would encourage you to do so, she's done some fascinating projects. One of the ones that I was very interested in was Salt Lake City. Salt Lake City has never been, but comparable size, maybe a little bit bigger than Omaha. And the strategic plan, I read it, and I was excited about what they were doing. And then you looked at the building that came out of that, and I'm excited about the building. I don't see enough here that I'm excited by this. I understand that, yeah, you could make the Jones Building a neat little branch library, you might get a central library, but I want to see a vision before I would be voting on something like this. It's not, there's not there yet, and I'm not certain why, this goes back to why the urgency. If you could turn around and say, yeah, this is what we're going to plan, and this is what we're going to invest, both $100 million, is a number that's been floated around for a new building, and then thinking about what your long-term commitment is as a council to support your public library, you need to know that before you're off making a decision. Finally, just some housekeeping, and I think Sarah highlighted this. If you choose to go ahead with both the leases, I would, pedestrian crossing on, was it 13th and 14th Street, there are no pedestrian crossings at Jones, that needs to be in there. There was never, the board agreed to an MOU, it was a good starting point for some of this, but they left out some pieces, and you could see a little bit of that rush that's happening there. And then the last thing I would highlight, and this goes back to communication and why so many people are coming out, at least it's interesting hearing today's council meeting, first time I've been to a council meeting. There was a woman who spoke at the end of the board meeting, and if you had a chance to listen to her, she was great, and I'm fortunate I don't have in front of me her name, but she talked about communication. And one of the things that's really been frustrating about this process has been the lack of transparency and the lack of communication at all levels, both at the mayor's office and the city, and then also the board along the way. We've done it, we've heard things, but only after people have been screaming bloody murder or writing letters to the editor. Social media is like a flame war. If you get out there, if you avoid it, that's also good as well. But part of the process of whatever goes forward is that you need to hold, or the mayor's office needs to also hold the board accountable for what the communication, and yourselves, what the communication process, how are you going to involve the staff? How are you going to involve the people of Omaha in the decision process? And the ideas of what's going, what's going to happen? The starting in the fall was a start, but it's an ongoing process. If you're going to need a new building, you're going to need advisory committees. You want to have people who want to be excited about this. This is an opportunity, it's, they're right. If you're going to invest, whatever you're going to invest, you need to get everyone on board. You don't want to have it as something that is brought to you from on high. You want the public to be as excited about it as the staff could be if there was something happening. Anyway, I do oppose this, first, because I think it's really short-sighted, but second of all, the process has just been, I don't know, it's kind of depressing, as a recent resident moved to Omaha, that the city has so much potential, and this is not showing it. So, thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Other opponents, please. I think this is the last opponent in the audience, we have a couple by Zoom still,
Good afternoon, my name is Kim Kalkowski. I live at 1502 South 10th Street. I appreciate you going on four hours now and listening to all of us. We do appreciate being heard, because in opposing this, I'm not alone, and there've been a lot of us who have been terribly distressed by the lack of transparency. I'm, I kind of feel inane following this gentleman, because he made so many wonderful points. A lot of us are quite emotional about this, getting on the starky side, and that's just because we're frustrated, and that's what tends to come out. It would be nice to be able to just have a discussion and put forward our ideas, you know, we don't hear from your ideas, but we've heard from the library board. Mostly, I'm wanting to know, is this plan necessary? Is it really a plan, as you define a plan? And what's the rush, and why now? I mean, we read in the newspaper how excited our mayor is to put forth, you know, this new revitalization effort for downtown Omaha, and I want to know why revitalizing downtown Omaha is only for retail and office space, and what, why not a beautiful library, which, and cultural center, which could be world-class? I mean, this gentleman's talking about Margaret Sullivan. I too have been going to the library board meetings, and in the library board meetings, we stand up, and all the ones that I've gone to, and every community meeting I've attended, not one person stands up and say, hey, we really like this idea. Everybody has been upset, distressed, because we don't know what's going on, and we're being presented with these opportunities of, like, now I found out floodplains and asbestos riddled, we really want to get into that with our collections. It's just, we're frustrated. I also want to know why we can't, if we're going to have a wonderful, wonderful library, can we have it right where we have our beautiful library right now, right across from the June Leahy Mall? We can, for all the money that we're going to spend renovating, paying leases, and I, as I understand it, we would even pay for the demolition to have a developer come in and start their shovel-ready product by December. I'm kind of wondering now how many shovel-ready products are out there that we don't even know about, that are going to the ground? And I believe, Mr. Palermo, this was you taking out the MOU from the consent agenda last week? I could be wrong, because I wasn't here, but Naughtle was going to get $390,000, like, slipped into the sledge cakes and the waste data treatments and the lead paint abatement, all this. I mean, I went through every single article last week to the agenda to try and make sure that I could make sure nothing was happening, and then, oh, here's this little MOU that's put into the consent agenda, and it could have, like, that would have been a done deal, then we would owe Mr. Naughtle $390,000 for nothing, because it just got passed with the consent agenda. It just, it kind of makes no sense to me. So, I don't know, I'm an old lady, I've had a library card since I was a little girl, when you could print your name down at 23rd and M, and we didn't have the money to buy books. Mama put us in the car, and we'd go get six books apiece, you know, a family of seven. That was our library at home, because we had a library. I love libraries, I love the idea of them. It broke my heart to hear that gentleman talking about how sad he was about our downtown library. I'm not sure where they get their funding, I'm pretty sure it's all from the city of Omaha, and it, I don't know how much money we put into it. I know their staff has been cut tremendously, I know their budget has not kept up or has cut. So we haven't done any renovations to that library. Could we, like, hire Margaret Sullivan, or put out, you know, an invitation for world-class library designers to come in, look at the space, like this gentleman says, you have to really plan everything out? And, you know, find a place to store everything, not in a floodplain, not in an asbestos-ridden building, and then build ourselves a brand-new gorgeous library right where it is, and it'll be a treasure that everybody coming to our mall can see. So, thanks for hanging in there, listening to all of the opposition to it, and just really hope that you are able to listen to all of us and to people of Omaha, and not just developers.
Thank you. Thanks for staying with us this afternoon, too. I know it's been a long, a long wait for you as well. Any other opponents in the audience? Seeing none, I'll go to Zoom, and also thank the Zoomers for staying with us today. We have, I think, two opponents by Zoom. I'll start with Alexandria.
Hi, my name's Alex O'Handlon. I live at 3010 Lincoln Boulevard, and I'm here today just to, well, via Zoom, just to go on record, to request that you vote no on these lease agreements, or at the least lay them over until we have some more foundational work done. Firstly, I think we need a transparent cost analysis. The mayor needs to present the cost differences between what it would cost to move everything, lease the two new spaces, renovate them, possibly eventually buy one of them, and then also demolish the W. Dale Clark Library with what it would cost to renovate the current space. Two, we need an engagement process. The mayor needs to develop, present, and implement an engagement plan to help design this process. The reason that we do engagement isn't just to let folks participate, but it's necessary to co-create. It seems that whoever developed this plan failed to think through some important aspects like transportation and flood probability, and a lot of folks have brought that up and brought up some, like, really good ideas about how we could work around those things. So I think that the more voices we have, the more complete our plans could be. So it's not just to let people participate, but it's necessary to come up with good plans for the future of the city. Three, I think we need to finish our climate action plan before we move forward with any more demolition of especially city-owned properties. We're supposed to be developing that climate action plan with robust public engagement this year. So we need that to help us guide redevelopment and also regular development in the city. Demolition of buildings contributes to the emissions of new construction, and we need a climate action plan that can guide how we make these decisions before we demolish any functional city-owned properties. Finally, I just want to make a note about historic preservation. I am really passionate about historic preservation, and so I was really happy to see in this conversation today, a lot of enthusiasm and discussion about historic preservation. And so I just hope that we can continue this enthusiasm and discussion around historic preservation, more generally around development in Omaha, especially when we revisit the TIP application for the proposed Skylark development on 38th and Dodge. I don't think we need to choose between preserving 1401 Jones Street and the W. Dale Clark Library. I think they're both great buildings that deserve to be preserved. Some folks have mentioned that the Dale Clark Library is a little bit rundown, but I just want to highlight that part of historic preservation is upkeep. So we need to invest in upkeeping the buildings we have now, so that they don't become so dilapidated that we can't renovate them and preserve them. So with that, I just want to thank everybody that spoke today, it's really great to see everybody out, and I was really inspired, there was, like, so much great testimony today. So I just want to thank you for the time, and encourage you to vote no on this, and encourage the mayor to restart this process, and we need to start with engagement and proceed with transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. David, I believe you're our last speaker tonight. There you go.
I'm trying to start my video, but it won't work, and I guess that's not necessary. My name is David Changstrom. I, my business address is 10306 Regency Parkway My name is David Changstrom. My business address is 10306 Regency Parkway Drive, and I'm here to represent the interests of Herman &amp; Miller LLC. One of the principals owns a business in the area near the 14th and Jones location. And specifically, I'm here to raise some of his concerns with the process. Essentially, this, as many of the other speakers alluded to, or directly addressed, this process has kind of taken a lot of people by surprise. And while many of the speakers today addressed that from an individual perspective, I think it's also important to think about it from the perspective of business owners in the area who feel a little bit blindsided by the process. Before this, I attended previous meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, and one of the things that they addressed was, you know, the feasibility of parking next to this new location. And you heard that today from the representative from the mayor's office did a comparison of, or posited a comparison in which he said that there's slightly less parking at this new location than the previous location, but he indicated that it would be workable. The problem is, during the two previous Library Board of Trustees meetings, they had insisted that there exists an illustration, an exhibit, that demonstrates how parking would be achieved at this new location. My office has reached out to the Library Board of Trustees, asking for this illustration. We have yet to hear anything. And so I just want to make sure that it's part of your consideration. This information's important to businesses, because businesses need a plan. I'm sure that each of you, each of the members of this council, understand that. When a business can't plan, it becomes difficult to run your business. And so my concerns are, does the city council have this? I know that the representative from the mayor's office said this would come at some point, but if we don't have this information, why is it that we're considering entering this lease without that vital information? And so, does the city council have it? Are they considering it? How do I get this to advocate my client's interests? And then, is there any way that my client can work with the city to acquire dedicated parking rights in the area? And I think this is a dialogue we can have with the mayor's office, but in the immediate sense, I think it's important until this is figured out, that we not rush the process. And so I guess I just ask the city council to delay this decision in the interests of business owners, many of them small business owners in the downtown area. Second, just general concerns. Again, my client feels kind of blindsided by this, and one of the first things that popped into their minds was, this is going to be a lot of foot traffic in the area that they just don't know how to deal with. And so, is there just, we don't know if the, you know, the city of Omaha has a general has a general security plan down near the current W. Dale Clark Library? Is that going to get transferred to the new location? Is there a plan to work with the small business owners in the area to discuss these plans? And if so, what are these plans? Anyway, as the last speaker today, I thank everybody that came before me. Thank, I know we're at four hours here, so thank you to the city council for sitting through all this. But I'd ask that you guys at least delay this decision until until a more complete review and communication of that plan can be communicated to the local business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. We do appreciate everyone's testimony here tonight, and to be continued next week. No lights. Next item, please.
Non-action items, items 94 through 125 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero, means adjourned at 5:54.